Okay, we're ready.
Great. We'll call to order this meeting of the Board of Supervisors in Ventura County for March 18th. Roberta, will you do the roll call, please?
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here.
Supervisor Bennett.
Here.
Supervisor Flynn. And Supervisor Foy.
Here.
For the record, Roberta, Supervisor Flynn is recovering from knee surgery.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a moment of affirmation with Pastor Bruce Zachary from Calvary Chapel Camero. Thank you, sir.
Good morning. It is a privilege and a pleasure to address you this morning. I recently had an opportunity to visit the city of San Francisco, and although it's a fine city, a provincial city contemporary and cosmopolitan in its likings, I enjoy coming home to our county. But one thing I discovered after an evening with my family at Pier 39 and at Fisherman's Wharf, we went back to go to our hotel, and as I made a left turn, I discovered that rather than going to my hotel, that I was taking my family along a scenic tour. We were going through Chinatown, Coit Tower, Russian Hill, Knob Hill, every place except where our hotel was. Now, of course, my wife was urging me that I should pull over and get directions, and I thought since I had a master's degree from traffic school, why did I need my wife to tell me how to drive? Urging my children that these tours, that people pay good money for these scenic tours. And ultimately, we discovered where our hotel was. Well, to make matters worse, the next day I found out that the hotel was actually one turn from where I started, and what made matters worse was my wife was with me when I made that discovery. Well, the moral of the story really was that I was one right turn away from where I desired to be. And in times like this, in the world that we live in, there is a desire for a positioning system, a GPS, something that would direct us, to tell us where we should make the right turns, and to realize the opportunities are available for us to find the right direction. I have the utmost respect for you and the charge that you have and the influence that you have affecting a million people's lives, their quality of life, assuring that responsibility and how you seek to administer your charge with great reverence and respect. And as a pastor of one of the largest churches in our county and having that privilege, I consider the responsibility that you have, and I wonder, with the weight upon your shoulders and the decisions that you make, how to effectively make those in light of a desire for consensus, in light of a charge to seek compromise where appropriate, in light of the responsibility to make wise decisions that will affect not only our todays but our tomorrows for our children and their grandchildren and beyond. It has been the responsibility of the church to pray for its leaders and to urge and to exhort you and to encourage you, that God wants to direct you and desires to give you wisdom in the decisions that you face. I read recently a tremendous archaeological discovery that was made a little over 2,000 years ago, and they have conclusively determined now that Jesus was neither Republican nor Democrat. And I think that is sound truth, that there are many issues that are facing you that seem to be a party issue, and yet in making decisions that will impact so many lives, God has sought to given us a GPS, God's positioning system. We are exhorted in the Bible that I hold in my hand and I assume is familiar to so many of you. You're assured it's a bestseller and it's available in hotels, and I hope that each and every one of you has had an opportunity, not only to know this book, but more importantly, to know its author. And we're told repeatedly throughout the text of these scriptures that respect for God is the beginning of wisdom, and wisdom is what you need to effectively make the decisions that you are responsible for. And so it is my privilege to encourage you that wisdom is available, to remind you where you can find it, and to pray that God would continue to provide it abundantly to this distinguished group, that you can make the decisions that are affecting so many of our lives. And so with your permission, I would ask you to join with me as I pray for you. Father, I thank you for this group that has faithfully sought to administer the charge and the responsibility that you have provided in raising them to this office, and Lord, we trust that your decisions are best. And upon each and every one, I pray that you would give wisdom abundantly, that in the overwhelming weight of the responsibility, that they would be lifted up by you, encouraged, strengthened, guided, directed. Lord, for those who have sought wisdom perhaps in places where they ended up going on a city tour misguided, I pray that you would encourage them, that they are one right turn away. For those who have sought to yield to you, Lord, and seek wisdom from you, I pray you would continue to provide and encourage them, Lord, that they have made the right choice and that you will guide them and you will direct them. We pray for our county, the cities that are represented within the county, and we pray for all the issues that are going to be addressed on today's agenda. Give wisdom now, or we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. We have a great honor to have a young lady from the Brownie troop of 186, Laura. She's going to do our pledge allegiance. You ready, Laura? Do we have a -- do we have a mic for her? Great. Will you please stand?
Put your left hand over your heart. Ready, begin. On my honor, I will--
I pledge.
I don't want to do it.
I know. No, it's okay. Just say, "I pledge." Ready? I'll start with you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end.
She knows the Brownie pledge very well, and that's what she started with.
Does she want to tell us that one?
Can you do the Brownie pledge?
Can you tell us the Brownie pledge?
No? Okay.
Thank you, Laura. We appreciate that. Are you going to come back and see us a little later? Thanks, Laura.
All right. I hope when Laura comes back, she'll bring some of those Thin Mint Cookies that everybody's been selling, right?
That's right. We'll see you a little later. Okay. All right. Okay, we have the minutes of county and special districts.
Motion to continue, if there's a long wait.
Second. We have a motion and a second. We vote? Hang on. I wanted to hear that. That Brownie pledge. Okay.
Linda can do it for you.
You know it. That's right. Okay, we have our agenda review.
Yes, Chair Foy. Consent item number 14, we're requesting a continuance to April 15th. That will allow us time to get some information back from 8CD. We're in the process of getting some information back, and that might be useful when we get back in front of the board on this item. Item 16, there are revised board letter pages 19 and 21 and tables, pages 29 and 30. And there is also an addendum item, time certain item at 11:30, a presentation resolution proclaiming March 16th through the 22nd as mediation week.
Great. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any other comments on the agenda? No? Then we have motion to accept that. Do we have a second? Okay, then we have consent items 10 through 13, since 14 was taken off. Do we have a motion for any questions? We have a public comments. Do we have any cards?
We have one by attorney.
Pardon?
You need your paper card and ready.
On here?
No.
It's not on there. Okay, we have Miguel Espinoza. Miguel?
Good morning. Before I start, I'd like you to note the relevance between the pastor's statement and prayer to what I'm going to say. It is a basic concept of democracy that all individuals be treated equally under the law. However, in Ventura County, there are glaring examples violating that concept. The Ventura County Star reported the accusation of Oxnard Officer Martin Polo, that he raped a 12-year-old girl and that her family filed a $1.5 million claim against the city of Oxnard. Granted, a suspect is innocent until proven guilty. However, ordinary suspects of rape are booked, fingerprinted, put in jail, bail is set, and arraignment is scheduled. Polo was not even questioned. A year-long investigation using high-tech equipment, high-tech methods and procedures ensued while the officer remained on the force and in the community where he may have posed risk of rape to other young girls. When the claim was filed, Chief John Cromback placed Polo on paid administrative leave where he remains free, collecting more than $80,000 per year. After about 15 months investigation, Cromback submitted his report to the DA with no recommendation. He could not say there is evidence upon which to dismiss the case, to drop the charge. What worries me is that DA Totten will wait a few months and dismiss this case, as he did with Officer Frank Brisinger, who drove over and killed Cindy Connolly on an Oxnard beach. Totten decided Brisinger was not negligent, the key for vehicular manslaughter prosecution. Totten's report, however, indicated there were several official manuals on beach driving, all of which instructed that beach drivers must get off and survey the path of the vehicle before proceeding. Totten dismissed the case because Brisinger was not trained for driving on the beach, despite the availability of these manuals, which the officer either ignored or didn't read. Ordinary drivers are required to drive safely even when they are not trained to in specific areas. The DMV Safe Speed Law requires drivers to maintain a safe speed regardless of the posted speed limit, and there are no excuses for lack of training. When the DA determines a case involving a law enforcement officer, the possibility of a conflict of interest must be considered. The power of the DA to decide if an officer should be prosecuted becomes a very sensitive issue, one that requires a district attorney to recuse himself and place the issue in the hands of a court where it belongs. In too many cases, Ventura County district attorneys have, in my opinion, taken advantage of their authority and misused their power to dismiss action against officers with whom there is a possible conflict of interest. I believe it is the solemn responsibility of this board to ensure that the possibility of conflict of interest is obliterated. Furthermore, the board should review all cases in which conflict of interest may have influenced the outcome of such cases. I further believe that former district attorney Michael Bradbury may have been involved in several such cases, including the Oxnard Sergeant Dan Tristan killing of Officer James Jensen, in which investigator Richard Holmes recommended prosecution only to be overruled by Bradbury. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I think that's our only comment card from public, so we'll move to board comments. Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. Two things I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of people on this list, and I have one person, Peggy Powers, worked for the Ventura Unified School District as a secretary. And she began her career at Cabrillo Junior High School and then transferred to the Anacapa Junior High School before she retired. And the other people on this list. And the only other thing I would point out is we are in the midst of some pretty dramatic financial shakeups going on, and I don't think anybody knows for sure how big or broad, but if -- we're going to have our budget information coming to us today, but if we don't build in an abundance of caution right now, we're making a huge mistake. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Park?
Thank you. I would like to ask that the board adjourn in honor of J. Christopher King. Mr. King was the son of Irene King and recently passed away. He was troubled with schizophrenia for most of his life, and I know Irene was and is an amazing advocate for the mentally ill, and I'm hoping that this will continue to spur us on to find cures and better lives for people with mental illness. I'd also like to share with the board, I don't know if you're aware of, but there is some legislation that has been introduced, AB 2392, that would designate 48 units of the state park system as excess property of the state, which would allow them to be sold. And I want to bring this to your attention. I don't know if this has a likelihood of passing, as Supervisor Bennett said. We're in kind of a new world now where everyone's concerned with the financing as well as the ability to raise revenue. And with the state looking at selling our park system, it just brings to me the desire to make sure that the parks that we have in our county are protected, and I know we have one of the things in our general plan update that will be coming back to us to put an overlay zone to at least designate them as sensitive biological areas for preservation. So if they do get sold, they're not ready to be turned into housing tracts too easily or other types of development. I believe that concludes my comments. I know, I just wanted to throw in that I know in my city of Thousand Oaks, we have the Caneo School District is looking at closing two schools as a result of the budget crisis that they're facing, and it brings to mind that we need to make sure that, as you were saying, we need to be very cautious in how we spend our county's money, and I'm thankful that we do have a reserve and that we are going to continue to protect our funds, so we have that rainy day fund if needed.
Supervisor Parks, do you know where the 48 sites are, if there are any of them in Ventura County?
These are the park sites that were on Governor Schwarzenegger's list, that he was looking at closing, and now they're looking at possibly making them excess property. But I think if they can go there, they can go anywhere as far as state property is concerned.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, and good morning. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory of folks in my district, and yeah, these are going to be very challenging times for us. I look forward to our discussion this morning on our budget. Listening to the radio this morning and what's going on on Wall Street, it's shocking. And I don't pretend to even know the complexities or the depth of it, and I would hope that those folks in our county who are our experts, certainly our folks who are watching our investments and the folks we do business with, that we stay as on top of it as possible so we're alerted to any significant impacts that we will need to make at the local level. But it's, we've got some difficult times in front of us, and I believe conservative is probably not strong enough word, but we'll work through it as we always do. So that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I too would ask that the board would adjourn in memory of this list. Also, understanding that thing with the schools, that is a tough situation that affects everyone, but I guess in one sense, I was talking to the head of the school district in Simi Valley as they talked about the population of young kids is shrinking. They're expecting 100 less kids this year, 100 less kids next year, 100 less kids the next year, which puts their schools in jeopardy in the sense that gets schools down to 200 or 300 people, and I guess a school is more effective and efficient at 450 to 600 for these kids. And in one sense, we hope that they would take the conservative financial way of looking at it. It does affect the other side of some kids now all of a sudden had a school two blocks close to them, and now they have to go a little bit further, but at the end of the day, we do have to be careful about how we spend that money, and I appreciate some of them that are trying to find solutions to some of that, but I think we're going to have that for the next few years as the housing makes it very expensive for young families to live here, even to get young teachers here. So those are my comments. Now, let's, let us move on. We have just a few items to deal with here, and I think those are going to be, because we have a lot of time certain starting at 10 o'clock, we have our regular agenda, 28 with our health care agency. Perfect timing as you walked in, wasn't it?
Good morning, Chairman Foy, members of the board, and Mrs. Robinson. I'm Melanie Roy from the Behavioral Health Department. Before you is item number 28. There are four recommendations. The first is an authorization to establish regular position allocations in organizations 5180 and 5130. Most of these are being created to support the MHSA program. The second item is authorization for regular position allocations, and these are all MHSA-funded positions. All of the MHSA-funded positions, MHSA is ongoing, so all of these will be regular positions. These will be ongoing positions, and they'll be fully funded in subsequent years by MHSA. The third item is to authorize, to sign an amendment with Data Insight to increase their allocation from 74957 to 293109. They are the organization that does all of our data collection and analysis for our MHSA programs. And the fourth item is to authorize the Auditor Controller's Office to process the necessary accounting transactions to adjust appropriations and unanticipated revenue for salaries and benefits, services and supplies, and the purchase of 11 vehicles. So that's, if you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions on this?
I'd go ahead and move approval.
I'll second it, make the comment.
I'll second it and just make the comments. You've got some challenges getting all these positions and finding quality people.
That's right.
But we are fortunate that we have the proposition funding for this, so it's a great opportunity for the mentally ill here in Ventura County, but finding the quality people is going to be the real key for you, so good luck with that.
Yeah, that's right.
I know it's a challenge.
Now, these positions are, you say, funded with the proposition years to come?
Yes, that's right. These positions, they're either approved, expanded funds for programs, and what we'll do is we're going out and we're doing our planning for subsequent years, all of these positions will be included in that planning.
Okay.
So yeah, there's ongoing funding.
So there's no chance the funding's going away?
If all the millionaires leave California and the, you know, that, but no. I mean, this is--
What I just heard, there may be a lot less than I know. Anyway, so we, but there is that, and if the funding does go away, then we reduce the positions.
That's right. We have to.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion and a second, and we can vote on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have our auditor controller.
Chair Foy, members of the board, Ms. Robinson, this is a receive and file item on the statement of money in the county treasury. It's our fourth quarter annual report. A lot of the work that we do with this government code requirement is relied on for our outside auditors, so that brings the external audit costs down. If you have any questions, I can answer those.
No questions? We have a motion to accept?
Move the rejected action.
And a second?
Second.
And we'll vote on this. We can move to our correspondence, which is 30 through 32.
Move to receive and file.
We have a motion and a second, and then we'll--
And I would just note, I know that we have an item 31 is a resource conservation district general fund request, so if that's going to come back as an actual item for approval, I don't believe this correspondence agenda would be where we would put it. Just pointing that out.
Okay, those are our regular agenda items. We can move to a closed session, and then we'll come back for 10 o'clock time certain. All right.
We'll call this meeting back to order out of our closed session and we'll move to our 10 o'clock time certain, sorry for our delay, number 15, Ms. Robinson.
Good morning, I'm Marty Robinson with the County Execs Office. This is the time of year that we start our budget process for the next year and we're in the very early stages of that process. The good news is that it appears we will be able to bring forward next year's budget balanced, giving enough support to our departments to provide this year's service level at next year's prices. The bad news is, and it got worse even this morning, the bad news is that the enormous weight of the state's fiscal problems are still looming. State cuts may affect some of our departments by deletion our cutbacks in specific programs and there may be other difficulties that will arise with the state which will unfold as we move forward. And then we have what appears to be the very precarious natures of some of our financial institutions as some of you pointed out this morning. What's happening at our macroeconomic level is we don't know what the repercussions are going to be yet. So today's presentation is in three parts. First, a little review of our values that we, and guidelines that we use in developing the budget. A review for you as well as the audience listening at home on the limited discretion that you have on a projected 1.63 billion dollar budget for next year. That part's the one that answers the question, how do you make a small fortune, just start with a big one. So with that, we're going to start. And I'll cover the first two sections of this presentation, then Mr. Dursey will take us through some of the specific revenue projections and how the process is going to move forward from here. First of all, these, this chart outlines what we value. We want to maintain the credibility in the community and within our organization so we provide openness in all of our budget discussions and all of our budget presentations. We are also interested in delivering county services efficiently and effectively and your board, I certainly recall that shortly here in my new role that you have tasked me with coming forward and looking at how do we develop more efficiency and effectiveness. And we will be returning to your board later in the spring on that, on that issue. We had, we try to maintain fiscal discipline and I believe our departments and agencies have always been very strong in this particular manner. They bring in their budgets within the guidelines provided. And there's the board's commitment to a balanced budget. We live on the revenue that we bring in. That has been a tradition in this county. I hope it's something that we will move forward with. Basically, if this was a household budget, we don't buy groceries on credit. We try to deal with what we have and if in fact we have to eat a little lighter because that's what we have coming in, that's what I think we're going to be confronted with. And one other point I want to bring out, even as we talk through this year's budget or, excuse me, next year's budget, the '08-'09 budget, I think we're going to move through that budget fairly intact with the exception of what's happening to us outside of county government with the state and federal and the general economy. The issue that I think you're going to confront, I was pleased to hear several of you talk about trying to be frugal this year, particularly frugal and conservative because really '09-'010, I think, is when we are really going to be facing some major difficulties based on the fact that we've had major cost savings in this, that are, that are showing up in this particular budget. So with that, I'm going to go to the section about how do you make a small fortune. You start out with 1.63 billion dollars and that is what we project at this point in time, not including capital projects for next year's budget. And then you reduce that, you take away the non-general fund activities, the road fund, the fire district, the waterworks districts, all of those districts that have their own special streams of revenue for providing service and supporting their own budgets. And so that brings you down to a general fund budget of 870 million. And then you look at what's the direct revenue, where's the revenue stream that supports the activities? And 548 million is direct revenue and that direct revenue may be something like money for CalWorks clients, so the direct aid from the state or federal government. You would also have direct payments from Public Works and, so people getting services pay fees for services. So once you take that out, you're down to 3.22 million. Excuse me, 320, yes, 3.22, we'd be in very difficult trouble. Yeah, we can all go home now. So to, and then we, when we talk, we start talking about semi-discretionary, everything from this point forward is sort of semi-discretionary. But this county has always taken a strong stance for giving public safety a priority. In order for us to provide public safety, the four public safety departments, the sheriff, the DA, the public defender and the probation, the level of funding to maintain services, service levels for this year at next year's prices, that subtracts 173 billion from your, what you have discretionary there. And then we get into this area of other non-discretionary and I, we have a question mark there because it's sort of like, can we not pay debt service? Well, no, we, we do have to pay debt service. So we have limitations on that. So when we get, excuse me, when we get, so we have 74 million theoretically that you have discretion over. So it's very degrees of gray here, I suppose. When you get to, excuse me, when you get to what we have discretionary, that really includes basically, I'm sorry, this is so, it's, it's in your packets, but I'm sorry, it's so small. But it really is what we pay for in terms of our departments, the net cost for our departments. So is it discretionary to have just one assessor versus an assessor's department? And our assessor's department costs us 7.7 million dollars to run. So while we talk about what's discretionary, these are the things that we're supporting right now with that 75 million dollars. So that's what balances our budget at this point in time, that's how we divide that 75 million dollars. And as I mentioned earlier, none of this includes some of the capital projects that we anticipate coming, coming down the road, which we will work with your board on in between. which we will work with your board on in between. So you have all of our general departments and what their net county costs are here and what we do to support. What we have to contribute, say, to mental health in order to attract all the other federal money. We've got 11.7 million dollars there, that's their net county cost, so. No, no, that's a projection on next year. That's the projection at this point in time on next year's. And Paul will get into the details of that. But basically, what we did is we worked with the departments, we looked at where they were at, what service level they were providing, we take a point in time, we establish what positions they have, we project into the future. Then some of those departments we had to look at and say, well, you know, you received a little less direct revenue than we anticipated. So some of them were adjusted down to reflect that. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Dursey, the budget officer, and he'll take us through the more specifics.
So how do we end up with only 75 million dollars of somewhat discretionary dollars? We call it ballot, ballot box budgeting. And there's a number of limitations on your board's ability to appropriate dollars. This is just a list of key issues. There's a little lightning bolt next to the significant ones. One is the Prop 13, that's really significant. Prop 62, as voter approval required for any new local taxes. Prop 172, public safety, one half percent sales tax. I'll get into another slide on that a little later. But that, that money replaced property taxes in their ERAF shift and we're still way behind in that regard. Prop 218 limits our ability to even charge fees related to the assessments and charges. And then Prop 63 down here, 1%, I think you had a presentation on some of the Prop 63 information. Those are all new programs. The dollars don't come in under Prop 63 and your board does not have specific discretion over those. Those are geared toward new programs beyond what our baseline support for mental health is. So that's beyond that. Marty talked about the 11.7 million dollars for mental health. Those Prop 63 are above and beyond that 11.7 million. We're, we're struggling to maintain that 11.7 million and then we have these additional dollars for, based on the Prop 63.
And Prop 63 says you cannot supplant.
That's correct, that's correct.
Oh, Paul, would you just back up one? I think another point is the area of redevelopment. A lot of revenue has been captured by cities to do redevelopment projects. And that's, that's occurred since basically the passage of Proposition 13. So it's a redistribution of the taxes that has occurred in this county. And we may talk to your board some more about that in the future. And then there was one other thing. Oh, the only positive light on that whole chart of two, two pages is 1A. So, so I don't know, we should put a happy face there probably, but. Yeah, that's true. But as with the state, nothing is ever secure, so you know, a half happy face, I guess, you know, two face, smile happy.
I, I would like to get a report on the redevelopment agencies and the redistribution of revenue that would otherwise go for things that the county does provide.
The auditor control and I were just talking about that this morning, that we thought that that was probably worth coming back to your board about and having some more discussion.
And not just, well, also for like the fire department, you know, all, all the different departments would have received funds.
All of the taxing agencies have been affected.
This, this is, like Marty said, this is beginning of our budget process, kind of an outlook for next year, what we're looking at. Generally, we try to calculate what's going to cost us to perform current service levels at next year's costs. And then we develop the target budgets for departments. We're now currently meeting with those departments. And we plan on presenting our preliminary budget on June 3rd with final budget hearings on June 16th. Here's some of our key budget assumptions, secured property tax increase, we're looking at a 3% increase. That combined with all the other negative impacts of our, let's say, other general purpose revenues such as interest earnings, such as pass-through, such as other non-property tax related general purpose revenues, we're looking at an overall 2.1% increase in our general, what we call general purpose revenues for, for next year.
Can I ask you, your secured property tax, what was it last year?
8.1 or 8.4, one of those, a little over 8%.
So it's been a huge decrease.
Yes.
Just a huge decrease, wow. And you're expecting that to probably be lower next year, huh?
We're, we're hoping that it stays at 3, we don't know. At this point, it's pretty far out. But we're hoping that, you know, if, if the experts are somewhat correct, then the thing will turn around at the end of this fiscal year, at, excuse me, end of this calendar year. But whether it's turned around enough by January 1st, next lean date, probably not. So we would expect probably another 2% to 3% increase in security. Potentially, some of our other income, other, for example, sales tax or sales tax related income will be, will be going up a little bit to help offset. So if we get a 3%, maybe everything else will be going up 3% rather than going down. So that, you know, we don't know at this time. The issues really are, the current fiscal year, we had some significant decrease in costs. Or actually, from this year to the budget year, for example, POBs went away. Our retirement rates finally stabilized. Our workers' comp and our, and our liability insurance have decreased significantly. So those, some of those expenditures have offset some of the pressures we had from just a 2.1% general, general purpose increase in revenue. What we end up with though is, is a really tight budget for this year. But we won't have those kind of expenditure releases, reliefs coming in, in the subsequent year. So that's where we're a little tenuous for the '09, '10 fiscal year. And again, these, these are all numbers based on assuming the state is going to continue to fund their programs as they are. And I think we can all accept the fact that that's not going to happen. What we're trying to do is adopt a local budget based on local funding levels. And then at the time that the state makes their cuts, we will be back to your board with those impacts. Tobacco settlement revenue, we're projecting 8.2 million for this year. Prop 172 and health and welfare realignment, we're projecting to be about the equal as we originally budgeted for this year. The actual numbers coming in for this particular year are lower than what we had budgeted. So we're kind of projecting on that lower number and a little bit of increase for next year, which ends up being about flat from what we had budgeted this year.
And tobacco settlement, how much is that down from?
Actually, actually, that's looking pretty solid. It's actually ticking up a hair. But that's, that's the actual allocation. We, I think we were projecting in the $7 million range for, for next year. So we were happy with, with 8.2 million from an overall standpoint. I believe that the actual numbers for this year were a little bit less than that. I think they were like 7.9 million in that range. We actually budgeted about 8.6, I think, in tobacco, but some of that was, was interest and sometime one-time dollars.
And, and some of the allocations were one-time?
That's correct.
allocations at that.
Prop 172 fire contribution remains at 960,000. I think if your board recalls, we had, there's an allocation that goes to the fire district as a contribution from the general fund. That number, if, if we go through the calculation, should be in the million and a half range. Our, our budget at this point in time, we have only, we have the current amount, which is 960,000 that we are currently contributing to the fire district out of the general fund that we're maintaining at that level. That's our current recommendation, whether or not we, we come around on that. But that is what's in the budget at this time. It is not a million and a half or whatever the next number would be, but it's 960,000. There's a formula that bases that number and it, we have not done that calculation yet. And, but, but it remains at 960,000. We're working on that calculation, we need some ERAF data to make that calculation. Generally, I say generally, maintain current service levels. This again is very preliminary, we're still discussing with, with the departments as far as the information coming in from departments and our projections on, on departmental revenue, our projection on departmental expenditures. We think generally we can maintain current service levels and state and federal impacts not known or incorporated in our budget at this time. Busy graph, assessed valuation, the blue line is the year-to-year change percent in assessed valuation. And if you see here, it's a little over 8% here in this year and going down, excuse me, and then going down to roughly 3% in that year. Here's, it crosses over here, this is where it is actually, 8%. The year before it was up in the 12, almost a 12% range. So we're down in the 3% range. The green line is the 10-year rolling average and even that ticked down, 8%. That would be our guideline that we would try to budget at. If we had an excess of that number, we would try to budget a 10-year rolling average. But we don't have anywhere near that number, so we can't budget 8%. The red line is just strictly, the red bars are strictly the dollars of assessed valuation. And that is, or actually, assessed valuation dollars, correct. So that's in a roughly, a little over 100 billion dollars.
While that chart's up there, if I could point out, Mr. Chair, if I could point out, if you, if we look at the mid 90s and you see that dip that is down there, and then in addition to that, you have the prediction that this real estate crunch is going to be worse than previous real estate crunches. We probably should be thinking of that blue line being below the mid 90s blue line and for a longer period of time.
Well, I think if we, if we look at this number here, whatever, this number here is like 1.8%, which is actually below the standard 2% increase in general assessed valuation. Property tax revenues, these are just the pie chart of how the dollars go. You see our county gets 26.5%. It used to be in the 18, 19% range. We've done it based on this, our, the most recent ERAF 3 shift, which we traded vehicle license fees for property taxes, still property tax related, so we shifted it over to that.
Is that different that we had that report that came out from the, that did the thing on RMA and all those, I mean, the police and sheriff, and they said it was 18%?
Yeah, it, it depends on how you define it. This, we've included what's called the in lieu, property tax in lieu of VLF, basically. Because they shifted property tax, the state shifted property tax and took away our vehicle license fee. So we, we're actually incorporate that into our, it's a part of our property tax allocation. So that's why we're including it in this pie chart.
And we get to spend all of that?
Get to spend all of it.
Okay, it's not allocated someplace else?
No, that, that, the county 25 cents, special districts over here, this 18.5, like fire district would be included in that, our library would be included in that 18.5. That's just a general number, 18.5 cents on every dollar would go to the special districts.
Okay.
Property tax revenues, this is just a, a bar chart. You see back here in the, in the, in the early 90s or mid 90s, came way down. Part of that was due to the ERAF shift, well, most of that, actually, this, this is all due to the ERAF shift. You see a straight line, we would be up in this area here. But the state took away a bunch of our property taxes. ERAF versus Prop 172, I touched on this a little earlier. This is ERAF shift. They've taken, the state has taken this upcoming, this particular year, over 100 million dollars from the general fund in ERAF shift and replaced that with Prop 172 funds, which you see is about 60 million dollars. So that's a 40 million dollar deficit our county is looking at relative to that, that shift from, from property tax to the Prop 172 sales tax. Another, another item that we want to discuss with that is the fact that that Prop 172 funds is not discretionary from, for your board's standpoint. Before, you had full discretion over the 102 million dollars of property tax. Now you have almost no discretion over the 60 million dollars. So you get a lesser dollar amount and, and less discretion. So they, it's a double whammy as far as we're concerned. Sales tax distribution, this is just a, again, a pie chart. State general fund gets most of the sales tax. Our county's sales tax at 7.25 is, is basically the lowest in the state. Local general fund, this 1% are unincorporated area. Whatever, in unincorporated area, whatever real, real retail sales go on in unincorporated area, we get that 1%. All the cities, we get that local general 1%. The state local, this is Prop 172 funding, this half cent sales tax, and then we have local, and then the health and welfare realignment tax also. One more item that I just want to point out on health and welfare realignment sales tax, one half cent. We get 60, over 60 million dollars in health and welfare, excuse me, in local public safety, one half sales tax, one half cent sales tax. We're in the 40, 35 million dollar range for health and welfare realignment because of the way that it was originally established. So we're actually, we're what's considered a donor county in the health and welfare realignment sales tax realm to the, to the tune of about 30 million dollars a year as far as that goes. And that was based on how the allocation was first done back in the 90s or, I'm not exactly sure, maybe it was even prior to the 90s. But whenever, whenever the health and welfare realignment came in, we were, we were shorted from that standpoint, became a donor county. So if you just compare these two numbers, you don't get the, you'd think we would get the same dollar amount because they're both half cent sales tax. But the way they're reallocated, we're, we're short on the health and welfare realignment.
Can I ask one question? Of, of all the sales tax collected in Ventura County, what percentage does Ventura County get?
Ventura County gets the 1%. Ventura County gets, let me go to the next one real, real quick here. Because the cities, the local general fund, the county gets roughly 8%, okay? Generally speaking, unincorporated population is about 10% of the county. The county gets 3% of the city's 1%, if that makes sense. Out of this 1% in each of the cities, except for Ojai, the county gets 3% of that 1% as part of our deal for the, you know.
For originally passing the law to allow them to collect sales tax.
That's correct. And for the local, and for limiting the growth in the unincorporated areas also. So the local general fund gets 1%. The cities pay us out of that 1% 3%. So overall, we get about 8%.
We get about 8%.
8% of the total 1%.
When I researched this earlier, you were saying we, we're about the lowest in the state.
We are, and that'll be, I don't know if it's the next one, but it's, here's the sales tax revenue. This is just straight sales tax out of our, out of that 8%. This is what we get out of it, pretty self-explanatory. Here's a sales tax comparison you were, you were referring to. Ventura is about 11th as far as population and they are down here in the 25, 30s as far as, probably about 20th as far as the sales tax. The sales tax dollars that, that are generated are the, in the unincorporated area is the light blue. The population is a dark blue. You see Sacramento County, which has no growth or no restrictions on where they're putting big box retail, et cetera, et cetera, actually collects more in taxable sales and sales tax than LA County, which is second. You see, LA County's population is up here in the, you know, in the 10 million, 10 million population. And, but they only collect in the, you know, five, they have taxable sales in the 5 billion dollar range. Where Sacramento County over here has, you know, in the 7 billion dollar range of taxable sales. Anyway, we have Kern County here, smaller than Ventura County, Stanislaus, all these different counties are smaller. I can, almost all of them, except, except Contra Costa, Alameda and, you know, a couple of these up at this, these three here are smaller than Ventura County. So again, we're 11th largest. It's kind of curious, is Santa Clara County, which is significantly larger, has very little, has even less than Ventura County. It's just an anomaly that Santa Clara County has. So that's our, that's our comparison. We are very low relative to other counties when it comes to collecting sales tax in the unincorporated area. Retirement contribution for next year, we're projecting at roughly 100, a little over 130 million dollars. This is a, this is a chart that shows you the green line is retirement interest investment return, okay? The, the, the yellow line here in the middle, it's supposed to be yellow. The yellow line in the middle is their 8% assumed rate of return. So anything below that, for example, in this year where there were minus 6% or 7%, when you compare that to the 8% that's the assumed rate, they're minus 14% overall. For example, in this year, I talked to Tim Thonis, the retirement administrator yesterday, and he said that currently, they're about minus 4% for the current year. They're hoping, they're hoping to end up at zero for their current, for the fiscal year, they're hoping. Whether they get there or not is, well, if I knew that, I wouldn't be working.
At, at zero, you were saying, Paul, you're saying at zero that they're, they're going to meet their projection?
No, at zero, they would be 8% below what they would expect it. So there'll be a minus 8 when it, even at a zero. So this is where the, and then the yellow line, the yellow line here is the actual retirement contributions, which equates to the right side of the column. So you see as the, as the revenue, as the interest returns go down, the contributions go up accordingly. Hopefully, since our earnings have been up a little bit in the last three or four years, that's where we're seeing a leveling off and a ticking down. We would have expected to see that actually a little earlier, but the retirement board changed some significant demographic assumptions, which they had to do because, and we were, people were living longer and, and having, primarily living longer. So they had to change a lot of their demographic assumptions, so that caused the rates. Thankfully, they've at least flattened out and we would expect them to. they've at least flattened out, and we would expect them to, depending on investment returns, be flat for a few years at least.
Was it the, the change in assumptions that have led to the 0% growth?
No, the change in, no, the assumptions were actuarial assumptions based on the demographics, the population of the people that are actually employed and, and retired, and how long they're going to be living, and what their pay is, and various assumptions.
What has, what has been the, what has affected the interest though, that, you know, when they were expecting?
The, the stock market. The stock market, in the current year, the stock market is, is doing very poorly, about, I would say about 70% of the, of their investments are in stocks, and about 30, Supervisor Foye probably knows more about the details of this than I do, but about 70, 30 break, 30% are in bonds, and about 70% are in the stock market, and they're, they're very diversified in the stock market. But regardless, the stock market, as, as most people know, has been very poor over the last four or five months. Prior to, prior to the real downturn, they were looking a little bit positive, and then everything, you know, the whole crisis for the mortgage, mortgage-backed securities and all that, it's impacted the entire stock market. So, so it's ticked down significantly, and they're actually at a minus four for this current fiscal year.
Yeah, and that's, that's where they're at. I think those, those numbers were through January, and we had the, investment people came in yesterday at the meeting and said February was the worst month they've seen.
Okay. Thank you for that good news.
Yeah, so it was, it was, it was drastic.
I don't, I don't mean to criticize, but it doesn't seem like the, the most prudent way to invest, you know, if you're putting 80% in the stock market. And I, you know, like I said, I don't mean to criticize, but I'm wondering if we're looking at perhaps changing how that's allocated.
Well, I mean, even some of the ones that we went through yesterday, you look at some of the ones over the last 10 or 12, 15 years, through some of the ups and downs have been done very well. And, you know, because well is, we're not making the highs, but we, we take a lot less losses, they were, they were in just tremendous losses. I mean, things that people hadn't lost in 20 years, these people had lost. It was, it was just amazing where, where we saw this go and where it potentially could continue to go. I think we're, we're going to have some things we have to be careful of.
Right. And theoretically, the retirement board is looking long-term. And so long-term, historically, stocks have, have, have outgained bonds significantly. So it's worth, you know, even risk adjusted, so it's, it's beneficial for them to be in, in bonds, excuse me, in stocks in the long run.
Right. We, we were down 4%, but we go back and, we made 17% last year.
Right.
So we had it up, I mean, when you average it up. But when you go down 4% below breakeven, really, our target is 8%, so really 12%.
You're minus 12.
Minus 12, right.
Correct. And we try to run models as far as what, what we think our contribution is going to be in the out-years. We're hope, we're thinking even if they have a zero return, we won't see a, a huge uptick in our, in our contribution rate because of the fact that they have some pipeline gains from prior years when you have a 17%. They do a whole smoothing process as far as their retirement valuation of assets. So there's a smoothing that's involved, it smoothes it over five years, so you don't have a huge fluctuation in your, even though your retirement, you see your retirement returns are going way up and down, where you have a little bit, little bit smoother line as far as the actual contributions. Your retirement returns are maybe volatile, but hopefully you smooth out what your contributions are.
Is there any reevaluation on the percentages that you're putting into the...
Yeah, as a matter of fact, that every, every, every month, they look at that. They do. And his smoothing is, is a good point, where they have some of that excess, the excess money made above the 8% is put away, so that when you have a loss over a five-year period of time, part of that comes back in, so we're not taking. Because otherwise, we'd be doing this with our contributions every year. We'd have no way to budget.
General fund net costs, this is again, projecting out next year what we see at this current time. 322 million is, is what, what we would call overall net county cost, and that is your, the general purpose revenue, equivalent to the general purpose revenue. So we are balanced as far as our budget is, is concerned. Again, the vast majority of the dollars go out to the public safety area, and I don't think there's any big shock in that. County issues, just go quickly over these, our reserves are half of the board policy. We have some unfunded liabilities out there, not significant relative to, I think, I think Johnny pointed out last week that Contra Costa County is, you know, in the two and a half billion dollar range, and we're in the, you know, probably $25 million range, if that. And we're, we're going to be, that'll be an issue that we'll be bringing up with, with the, actually, outside audit firm when they start, because they actually have to, we will have to start recording that particular, those particular other post-employment benefits or OPEB liabilities come at the end of this fiscal year. So we'll be in discussion with the outside auditors as far as what the actual, what we would consider to be liabilities, unfunded liabilities, and what their definition is. Key litigation, your board is probably more familiar with that information than, than most people. Retirement contributions, we're always keeping an eye on those. Of course, labor contract, required maintenance, and capital requirements. Again, future impacts, state and federal funding, state's looking at a 14, is it $14 billion today? I don't know, maybe it's $15 billion, I don't know, is it 16? Anybody, 17, anybody? 17. Sold. Plus, not only do they have a deficit, they're going to be restructuring programs, and we see that already with, with some of their proposals to restructure juvenile justice programs, restructure mental health programs, restructure sheriff programs, and how, how we're holding on to inmates, et cetera. Expanding jail population, SB 81 is referred to, you know, is, is another restructured program, that's in probation, capital instruction at BCMC and, and other areas. Clean Water Act mandates NPDES and the TMDLs as, as county unincorporated, we're still working with Public Works, that, that cost we're projecting to go up by $400,000 next year alone. And that may not be enough either, but, but we're monitoring that very closely as far as what is the federal mandate and what is the state mandate? Because if the state is expanding on the federal mandates, then we need to be aware of what the state is, is causing us to, causing us to do relative to what the, what the federal mandate is. Revenue stability, property taxes, sales tax base, again, sales tax base, not only our local sales tax, but property, but health and welfare realignment, and, and Prop 172 sales tax. And of course, grants, which we would expect a number of grants to go away in the next fiscal year as the state fine tunes their budget.
I think during the district attorney's presentation, he mentioned last time that he has, part of, like, 20% of his budget was grants. Some of them may be stable, but that's an area where if they come from the state, it's, you know, it's going to be problematic.
This was our five-year outlook last October when we came to your board. We thought, okay, we're, excuse me, we're okay here for the next couple of years, we think we're pretty balanced, until this is where the, we, we would expect the first phase of the jail to come on. These, these numbers, these years actually may have moved out one year, but anyway, at this time, we had a little bit of a gap, about, about $15 million in that year, and it came, and it worked its way up to about $30 million in the subsequent year from the jail, jail expansion. That's the five-year outlook we had in October. A new look in March of '08, we have a little bit of a gap in '09, '10. We have balanced currently fiscal year. Next year, we, we expect to be balanced. The subsequent year, we're looking at a little bit of a, a little bit of a discrepancy, a little bit of a gap that we're going to have to close one way or the other. And then, of course, in the subsequent year, and then the out-years, 11 and 12, and 12 and 13, which become, instead of, instead of 15 and 30, we're looking at about 20 and $40 million deficits in those out-years. So that's, that's our five-year, and that's assuming we open up the Todd Road Jail at the lowest, at the lowest cost locally.
And that the, the other costs are, are shifted...
That's correct.
To the other departments.
And that's, and that would be the next one. Our five-year outlook of, of net costs would be at 385 million. That assumes basically a 3% tax growth rate for next, for '09, '10, and then we're going up to in the 5% range, hopefully, in the next couple of years. That may be, that may be optimistic at this point, but you see this, public safety spending goes from 54 to 61%, and the remainder has picked up among all these other areas that would have to absorb that cost increase. So we have to be balanced.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When you had the, the last slide with the disparity between the expenditures and revenue, and a lot of that is the Todd Road Jail, that incorporates both the operating expenses as well as the cost for the bonds that we'll have to get.
Yes, and that's, and actually, we phased it in, we didn't, we assumed that, whoops, I don't know what I did. We assumed that the, the first year, there wouldn't be full capacity, we phased it in over a couple of year period. So, you know, assuming it was about half filled in the first year, and then, for, for an operational expenditure standpoint, and then more full.
Well, well, not as dramatic. We'll also have some with the, the expansion or the clinics that we're going to add to the VCMC, both in terms of the debt for the, you know, to...
That's correct.
Develop as well as the operating, perhaps, maybe some more, though we're going to, I know transferring some of those clinics, they'll just be moving into the new buildings, but most of that, I guess, then will be in debt service.
But it would be with the hospital.
Yeah, it'll be, that would not show up in the general fund outlook, it would be show up in, in the medical centers outlook and their five-year plan. And that would show up as debt service in their, in their department, and they're alleviating a lot of that debt service by consolidating leases and that, and that type of thing. So they got that into their plan, correct.
Thank you.
And that's our, that's our show for today. We'll be back.
I'm sorry, would you go to the next chart? Yeah, that one. Now, that, when that identifies 61%, that does not include the 172 funds that go to...
No, that does not, yeah, because we, we consider that to be direct revenue.
So it's showing up as direct revenue, so it doesn't show its share in the net cost.
Paul, I know that Ms. Cohen has a question or comment?
Very quickly, just a question on the retirement contribution chart that you were on. Has there been any evaluation of the impact in the retirement board's change in policy on interest allocation?
On interest allocation?
The interest allocation?
Interest allocation.
On the retirement?
Uh-huh.
When did they...
I think that was an item yesterday's agenda.
I think they just did that yesterday.
Okay.
And I talked to Tim about that.
Oh, no, no.
It wouldn't be a significant, it's not a significant item as far as how they're allocating your interest.
Uh-huh. Okay, thank you.
Right.
We will be periodically, you know, we schedule these every week, whether or not we will use the time every week to do, to bring you up to date about where we're at is, is in question, but we will do this periodically enough so that we can keep you in the loop about the freshest information that we have and where we think we're going. And to date, I want to express my appreciation to all the departments, they have all come in for meetings and talked about their targets, and everybody seems to have a real sense of the difficulties that we face. So I appreciate that.
And Paul, I appreciate that great presentation you and Marty did. It's, it's, in one sense, it's tough to see all that, where it's going, but because of, and I can't take credit, the rest is board can take credit, and Johnny's great leadership on putting this county into a good position to be able to handle some of this tougher times where you're going, and, and hopefully that we, we are going to be able to weather this without a lot of layoffs and without a lot of distress to the people and the people of this county. I think the state's going to dictate a little bit of that to us, but I'm just proud to say, with these group of people here, and yourself, and the rest of the department heads, who've really done a good job to put this county in a good position, so, thank you. Okay. Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make one other, one other comment. We've, we've had an experience in the past here when we had growing, when public safety was growing as a percentage of the net, net fund, I mean, net county cost, and we had the same projection there. You look at that and you go, oh, they're going to go from 54 to 61%. The impact on the non-public safety departments last time was severe, it'll be, I think, even more dramatic, and people, people need to be aware of that, you know, that talking about real, significant cuts and impacts on, on some of the programs that we'll find very difficult also going forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might also, just, just to say that I think that we are at great risk with grants, and, and we'll need to be watching that closely. We have encouraged our departments to go after grants, they've been excellent at doing that, and we've also said that the positions tied to grants go away when the grants go away, and that, that is going to be a tough one, because we will be losing some grants.
Right, right. Yes, there's no question about it.
If I may just chime on, that it's not this coming budget, but the one after that, it looks like we're going to be hit harder. And so I think it's important to keep up with our board policy of trying to increase those reserves. To get to the reserve fund that we're looking at, right now, we're about half of that, but I, I would like us to continue in that, trying to keep getting there, so that we'll be better off when it starts hitting harder in the following budget year.
Good. I'd like, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. We need to do a receive and file.
Motion received and filed.
We have number 16, but I'd like to hold off just for a few minutes on that, we're past, we're a little late. We brought our young Brownie in, and she's, and she's with her family and the little, little ones. I'd like to see if we can get this resolution to her, plus she's also probably got a little cookies for us too, so.
And Mr. Chair, also, if I could have, item 18, also heard, we have the vice mayor and the city manager here.
Oh, yes, okay, great. Why don't we do that?
Thank you.
All right. So why don't we do this? You want to bring Laura down? Anyway, and she's coming down with her family? She's coming. What we're, what we're doing today is, we're going to have a resolution for the Girl Scouts of the USA celebrates their 96, sixth year with nearly 15 million women who grew up participating in Girl Scouts. I think there's a few here, right? She was a Brownie, and through Girl Scouts, unique leadership development programs, girls define leadership by making the world a better place, by discovering, connecting, taking action in their communities. No question about it, these young girls have been out selling cookies, doing a lot of different things. Throughout their distinguished history, Girl Scouts has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, character, and one of those girls is here today. She did our pledge of allegiance today. How you doing? Good? Good. Laura Gaus, seven years old, a Brownie Scout, Troop 186 from Ventura. She's here with her mom, and let me come down and bring this down to you.
Okay, ready? Okay, smile a bit, honey. There you go.
Thank you very much. She has some dollars.
You want to give two?
You have some dollars?
One dollar.
There you go, Steve, pay for it.
How many dollars you got, Steve?
I can pay for her, but I think you guys are good for it, except, except if you're counting on the county budget.
Okay, he's the one reason.
This is Supervisor Bennett.
Thank you.
Wow, she has no problem excepting. She's a good Girl Scout.
Brownie.
That's something we already got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be your own troop, right?
I'm going to give you this, okay? You take it to your troop?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mom, for the help. Thank you.
was added to it when the port was built in 1939. But in March, March 24th of this year, the city will observe the 60th anniversary of its incorporation, and has planned lots of community events, and I'm sure Mr. Sharkey will share those with us. The city was incorporated with a population of 2,875, has grown to a current population of 22,347, employs 125 individuals as, for the city operations on a full-time basis, total budget approximately 33 million, and became a charter city in December of 1996. It certainly is one that brings a community of high quality for its residents, the wonderful beach, beachside community that it is, it is, has a planned, planned development that provides excellent public facilities and responsive city services for all of the residents in the community, and it certainly is an important part of, of our county as, as both the history and the cultural history and the spirit of friendship and cooperation the city has had with all of the county over the past 60 years. The current membership on the City Council, the leadership of the City Council, certainly Mayor Tony Young, and we have with us again Mayor Pro Tem John Sharkey, council members Norman Grifaw, Maricela Morales, and Murray Rosenbluth. And as I said, tomorrow night, we're going to have, they're, they're going to sponsor a celebration, a birthday party, and, and we are, I'm very pleased to have them come in today so that we can celebrate this, this pearl of the Golden Coast, this, this great little city in our community that is a genuine treasure to have. And I'll step down to present this and would certainly like to hear from you as to the celebration ahead. Thank you. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, number long, Mr. Chair, members of the board. That was probably the best speech that could be given about the city, and it's certainly well done. We do appreciate this, this proclamation, the recognition, I was here for the 50th anniversary, I probably, you've probably given the 70th to somebody else. But everybody is certainly invited tomorrow to the council chamber at 7:00 PM, we'll be starting our festivities, and we will be agreeing upon a new slogan for the city, if we can all agree on a new slogan for the city, it'll happen tomorrow. So everybody's invited, and once again, thank you so much. We have our City Manager Dave Norman. Dave, you want to say anything? He's a shy retired secretary.
Well, I want to thank you, and thank you Supervisor for honoring us in this manner. 60th anniversary is a milestone event for the city, and one that we're looking forward to sharing with the community.
Right, so now, now inside as to what that model's going to be? Congratulations.
Well, we've got a couple of choices, and some of them are better.
No, not really.
Anybody that shows up is going to be able to vote.
Okay. Well, let's, yeah, we're going to do a pick here. Okay, Mr. Norman, we'll turn around here. Thank you. We look forward to seeing you tomorrow night.
All right.
Thank you.
I don't see the, like I said, the, for mediation, we all here? No? DA's not here? Do you want to do? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, then we're going to go, I'm sorry, I was looking at 11 o'clock, trying to get it real way out. We'll go back to number 16.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, board members. I'm Kim Hawking with the Resource Management Agency Planning Department. I'm pleased to bring to you today the year 2040 population forecast, speaking of looking into the future a bit. The first thing I'd like to start with, however, is a very practical matter, is you have two corrections before you, amendments that were handed out. I'd like to go briefly through those. The first one contains, the last three pages show the, the changes, actually the last four pages show the changes, the, there are some slight changes to the tables and the substituted word households for housing, and that shows throughout the tables, basically. And then lastly, in that particular amendment, the unincorporated table was left out, and then the second amendment, number two, which unfortunately got whipped out of what was distributed, was Simi Valley and Thousand Oaks tables, and I apologize profusely for that. Anyway, you have those now, and those will complete the Decapolis Report. Those are in the Decapolis Report, Part One. I know this is a little confusing, there's two parts to this, Part One and Part Two, and the amendments were to the Part One Decapolis Report, not the Part Two. Any questions on the amendments? Okay. We took this same package to the Ventura, to VCOG last Thursday night, and I need to update you what they did, and I'm pleased to report that they adopted the package. They knew that your board may well be making some changes, two of which I, or at least the three pages of which I already spoke about. So they adopted it, subject to an amendment which will come to VCOG at, at their later meeting, and you may of course have further amendments this morning. So they basically accepted it after an animated discussion, I think pushing close to an hour, I think of, of discussion about it, and it was very interesting, asked a lot of excellent questions. The reasons we do these forecasts is, of course, this forms the basis for planning for the future. This is the very first thing you learn in planning school, pretty much, is the, looking into the future as to how many people you're going to have, is what forms the basis for your planning documents, for instance, your general plan. Southern California Association of Governments is using these numbers to the year 2035 in their regional transportation plan, the RTP. The Ventura County Transportation Commission will be using these numbers, especially the Census Trac numbers, which appear to be a great amount of detail, but that's the kind of detail they use in their forecasting models, and they're about to gin up a contract to redo their, they do it every eight, nine, 10 years, a transportation forecasting model where they forecast traffic, et cetera, in 20, 30 years into the future. So they'll be using these exact numbers your board will hopefully be adopting today. And the air quality people, of course, use these numbers. And then, of course, last but not least, the general plan people, all throughout the county use these numbers, our county numbers and the city people. And then private industry uses them. I got a call, for instance, from an old friend of mine, Mike Williams, who works for Waste Management, and he was very pleased to know that we were doing new numbers, and as soon as your board dealt with them, he wants a copy because they're going to be using them in their waste, waste management planning. The last time we did this was in the year 2000. We don't get to do these very often, and we don't have money to do them, and we spoke about grants before, this particular effort is reliant on a grant from SCAG through VCTC. The first time we did a similar, actually, this is the first time since 1978 that we've done a demographically based forecast, very complicated look at birth rates and death rates and in migration and out migration. The last time we did that was 1978. Ever since then, we've done much simpler types of forecasts. The process that we used, we started in September 2006, working with the City-County Planning Association, which is comprised of all the planning directors in the county, also attending our LAFCO members, the APCD members, and, and other, other planning agencies around the county. They had at least a dozen meetings on this particular subject, and ratified these numbers at their, about two or three months ago, actually. So this morning, I'm very pleased to actually introduce to you the people who did the real work on this. We put together, I think, an excellent team, and I want to thank Nancy Settle, my supervisor, for coming up with the idea to involve, to involve the City of Oxnard planning staff. Chris Williamson is here, working in the third aisle back there, he'll be speaking in a minute. City of Oxnard is very lucky to have their own personal professional demographer on their staff, so Nancy was very quick to figure out that he would be an excellent member of this forecasting team. So he did the Decapolis, Part One, and he's going to make a presentation here, and then Debbie Millay is an excellent part of our own planning team, and she did the vacant land study, which is an update of something she did a couple of years ago. In any rate, I'd like to introduce them right now. Unless there's questions of me at the moment.
Can I just ask one question before we do that? Going back, you said this was done in 2000, was the last time we did it?
Yes.
How did we, how did we end up? Did we meet pretty close to what our-
The numbers, you mean, how did they compare?
Yeah. That mean, did we end up being pretty good?
Well, as I indicated, well, let me just give you the numbers. The number for 2025, the last time we did it was 951,000. We didn't do a 2025 number, this time we did a 2020 and 2040, so you have to interpolate, I could add them up with the Census Tracs, but the 2020 number we came up with is 937, and the other number was 951 for 2025, and then 2040, we're at 1,200,000, so if you interpolate in the middle, you'd say, just, which is not the way you should do it, but it's about 969 compared to 951.
So you're really pretty close?
Yes.
That's great.
Actually, in the, in the pop forecasting biz, 5% error is within the, that means you're accurate.
That's really good.
Can I ask another, what was projected for 2010, and when was that projected?
A 2010? You know, I don't have that number with me, Supervisor Bennett. I apologize.
I appreciate that.
You mean for this current one?
Yeah, but when did we project the 2010 number, and how close were we?
The last time we did the 2010 number was in 2000, and I, I apologize, I did not bring that number with me. Does anybody bring that number with them?
If you could just get that for me.
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry, I-
No problem.
I'm going to bring, unless I, no, I didn't, I didn't write that number down. I wrote every other number down, but not that one. Sorry.
Thank you.
All right. Chris?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. If I could have the PowerPoint, there we go. Learn how to use your fancy thing here. Oh, wrong, the other PowerPoint, please. It was, it was my pleasure to work with the county staff, and I get to indulge myself in a little bit of high-level demographics and things, which, when you're working with projects all the time, it's, it's kind of a, a nice contrast. Let me walk you through this presentation. Oh, let me learn how to use this thing. Okay. As mentioned earlier, VCOG prepares projections about every five or seven years. This one was prepared under, with, with SCAG, really. We used and borrowed shamelessly from their demographic experts. So, in a sense, our methodology, with a couple of exceptions, is, is basically consistent with SCAG. And one of the exceptions was how we essentially came up with the forecast, which is projection number three, that is where each of the 10 cities and the county staff, sometimes involving their electeds, basically came up with a general plan capacity. I'll explain it more as we get a little further into this. I want to just remind you briefly, and this is not a class in projections, but how projections are done. The demographic method, as Kim was explaining, starts with a current year population, adds the net change of births minus deaths, that's called natural increase, and then adds or subtracts the net difference between in and out migration, that's called net migration. So, that's the basic actuarial method, often used by insurance companies and things, and in your projections for retirement benefits would be based on the demographic method. Another method is housing unit, that's pretty straightforward, you count the number of housing units, make an assumption about the number of people who live in them, and add group quarters. Group quarters are like jails, nursing homes, and anything other than a housing unit. Often, general plan numbers are based on housing unit method. And then the trick is, what's the persons per unit, as well as how many housing units? A third method, common, is trend, where you just look at past years, extrapolate into the future, there's different ways to do trends. And finally, a policy or a rate or a target-driven number, for example, having a cap on number of units or some target rate, say 1% growth, period. There's also in this, in any kind of projection, a top-down or bottom-up approach. Top-down is just, as you can imagine, DLF or SCAG or some other higher-level government does a projection at the county level, and we sort of have to meet that, so we add up our cities and we adjust them to match the county, or vice versa, they take a total number and allocate it down to each of the cities or Census Tracs. Often, that's done by SCAG, if local governments do not participate. So we definitely want to participate, and one question that came up last week is, why do we do this? And the answer was, if we don't do it, SCAG will do it, and then we have to live with their numbers. The bottom-up approach, again, is, is what you're used to, cities and county look at vacant land, estimate the density, take the number of housing units, household size, et cetera, we add numbers up, come to a county total. Often, the county total bottom-up does not match a higher-level government's top-down, and that's where we might end up with some disagreement. Methodologies, methodologies are often a combination. For example, the SCAG methodology currently being used takes a national economic trend, determines the California share of the national economy, which is roughly 1 in 13, 13% of the economy is in California, or is it 8? It's 13 or 8%, something like that, sorry. Allocates then, the California total breaks it out by the counties, that's usually by sector, so that the ag sector here is larger certainly than other ag sectors in other counties. Then, that's a top-down, then we, then SCAG will do a demographic local population bottom-up, and estimates the labor force available in your local jurisdiction, in the county.
I'd like to interrupt you right there.
Sure.
And what age do they project that people stop working?
Yeah, that's all part of the assumptions, Supervisor Bennett. Typically, the labor force is considered to be, well, 16 to 65, but really, what's key is the labor force participation rate, which is very low in 16, 17, 18, begins to go up. There's never 100% participation, it's more like 70 or so among adults, and then after age 65, they will change that number based on best available data on how many people continue to work after age 65. So it's a constantly moving assumption, based largely on Census Bureau surveys and data like that.
So as people stay healthier and stay in the workforce longer, that number will be adjusted?
It's generally increasing.
And can we get that, what, what the assumptions are that they've been using right now?
Sure.
Is that all, that's all public record?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
Make a note of that. Well, it goes up and down, partly depend on economic need, as, as people lose their retirement with-
I want to just remind you briefly, and this is not a class in projections, but how projections are done. The demographic method, as Kim was explaining, starts with a current year population, adds the net change of births minus deaths, that's called natural increase, and then adds or subtracts the net difference between in and out migration, that's called net migration. So, that's the basic actuarial method, often used by insurance companies and things. And in your projections for retirement benefits, would be based on the demographic method. Another method is housing unit. That's pretty straightforward, you count the number of housing units, make an assumption about the number of people who live in them, and add group quarters. Group quarters are like jails, nursing homes, and anything other than a housing unit. Often, general plan numbers are based on housing unit method. And then the trick is, what's the persons per unit, as well as how many housing units? A third method, common, is trend, where you just look at past years, extrapolate into the future, there's different ways to do trends. And finally, a policy, or a rate, or a target-driven number. For example, having a cap on number of units, or some target rate, say 1% growth, period. There's also, in this, in any kind of projection, a top-down or bottom-up approach. Top-down is just, as you can imagine, DOF, or SCAG, or some other higher-level government does a projection at the county level, and we sort of have to meet that. So we add up our cities, and we adjust them to match the county, or vice versa. They take a total number and allocate it down to each of the cities, or census tracts. Often, that's done by SCAG, if local governments do not participate. So we definitely want to participate. And one question that came up last week is, why do we do this? And the answer was, if we don't do it, SCAG will do it. And then we have to live with their numbers. The bottom-up approach, again, is what you're used to. Cities and counties look at vacant land, estimate the density, take the number of housing units, household size, et cetera. We add numbers up, come to a county total. Often, the county total bottom-up does not match a higher-level government's top-down. And that's where we might end up with some disagreement. Methodologies are often a combination. For example, the SCAG methodology currently being used takes a national economic trend, determines the California share of the national economy, which is roughly 1 in 13, 13% of the economy is in California. Or is it 8? It's 13 or 8%, something like that, sorry. Allocates, then, the California total, breaks it out by the counties, that's usually by sector, so that the ag sector here is larger, certainly, than other ag sectors in other counties. Then, that's a top-down. Then we, then SCAG will do a demographic, local population, bottom-up, and estimates the labor force available in your local jurisdiction, in the county.
I'd like to interrupt you right there.
Sure.
And what age do they project that people stop working?
Yeah. That's all part of the assumptions, Supervisor Bennett. Typically, the labor force is considered to be, well, 16 to 65, but really, what's key is the labor force participation rate, which is very low in 16, 17, 18, begins to go up. There's never 100% participation, it's more like 70 or so among adults. And then, after age 65, they will change that number based on best available data on how many people continue to work after age 65. So it's a constantly moving assumption, based largely on Census Bureau surveys and data like that.
So as people stay healthier, and stay in the workforce longer, that number will be adjusted?
It's generally increasing.
And can we get that, what, what the assumptions are that they've been using right now?
Sure.
Is that all, that's all public record?
Yes.
Great, thanks.
If we can make a note of that. It goes up and down, partly depend on economic need, as people lose their retirement with Bear Stearns or something, they go back to work.
And that's, that's one of my points. I think we're going to see this be very different in five and 10 years.
Now, just to finish up here, and then, the SCAG says, well, if there's not enough labor to fill the jobs that we've given you top-down, then the assumption is you have in-migration. And I want to point that out, that the in-migration numbers, for all counties, prepared by SCAG and DOF, are largely jobs-driven. In other words, they assume that all jobs will be filled, from this top-down, jobs-driven projection, and that immigration will make up the difference between your local labor force that's available, and the number of jobs. And all jobs are filled by either intra-state migration from other counties, interstate migration from other states, or international, and international is both legal and illegal. So that's how we get to estimates of migration. We did eight projections, number three is the forecast. The bookend projections I did, to kind of, all of these projections, other than the forecast, I did to sort of help understand the number. The first one is no in-migration after 2010. Now, that's somewhat of an unrealistic projection.
Starting with what number?
I'm sorry.
Starting with 800,000?
Yes, our current, you'll see that in a table coming up, 811,000. The base year is 2005, thank you. No immigrate, no in-migration after 2010. This is an attempt to look at what would happen if everybody stayed in the county and simply, well, died and was born, under all those assumptions. So you can call this our natural increase, just based on the people here. And we would have, oh, I'm sorry, there it is. Where's my pointer? Well, in 2040, we'd have roughly 980,000 people. The next, number two, projection is this SCAG I just, I just described it. It's the jobs-driven, top-down projection, that assumes all jobs are filled, and that would take us to a million 82,000. So just there, you can see that there's roughly 100,000 people, you could say, needed to fill the jobs under that projection, compared to the number of people here demographically. All right? So you could, you could say, 100,000 people are needed to continue the economic trend that this is based on. The third one is the general plan's capacity, which calls for a million 2,000 people. So the difference between the general plan and the economic trend, roughly 80,000 people, is not a small number, but it's also not unreasonably large. And for that, I made, what I made is an opinion, that we seem to have capacity to extend this economic trend, assuming there's a good match of the population already here, to the types of jobs that are coming, or will be in the county. So not only is there just numbers of bodies, but it's the match of jobs to people. And here are the bookend projections, and I added the Department of Finance's most current projection at the top, and you can see they have a much higher number for us. The other five projections are really designed just to give some context and what-ifs. The first one was, what if we need, or it just happened, that the ag workforce grows, because we want to have a vibrant ag economy, and a shift to a more labor-intensive crops, and we need more people. So if the ag were to increase by 22%, it, the future population jumps, but not a tremendous amount. The second one actually is similar, in that, what if there was a birth rate spike for roughly 10 years? Now, I picked this because historically, after the 1986 Immigration Reform Act, throughout California, in most counties, there was a birth spike, largely among Hispanics, somewhat or significantly related, I'm told, to the people who were in the ag, the ag industries. So once they knew they were here legally, they had some more children, frankly. And that has been documented by DOF. That spike is why we had crowded elementary schools in the 90s, and then now we have crowded high schools, and now we have crowded community colleges. It's a spike that's gradually moving its way through the population. And theoretically, if there is some immigration reform at the national level, we might see a birth spike again. So this was just a what-if. Number six was alluded to earlier. Hopefully, we all live longer. And I picked 10% because in the last 30 years, our average lifespans have increased by 10%. So looking forward 30 years, maybe there'll be another 10%. And as mentioned earlier, that adds to the population, just because people, the bodies are here longer, and they're alive, and they occupy housing units, and they may participate in, in the labor force as well. And that ironically is the largest projection. So the lifespan effect would, would produce the largest effect in terms of numbers. High housing costs, this now seems dated, but at the time, a year ago, you know, we were all worried about high housing costs, pushing or pooling different groups to live in the county, or live out of the county. And the schools, as you know, have declining enrollments, and some of them attribute that to people moving out of the county for lower housing costs in Bakersfield and wherever. What if that were to continue? It has, it has some effect on the population, not dramatic. And finally, number eight is related to the second part of the report, where if we wanted to achieve a certain target level of jobs-housing balance, and this is what Debbie Millay will talk about in more detail, what would that do to the population? If we sort of restrained housing to keep, to match jobs, and not let jobs run ahead. Of course, a combination of any of these changes, if you had several things going on at once, the cumulative numbers would be higher. Here's a table that's in your report, Table 30. I ranked the eight projections from lowest to highest, in terms of their 2020 population, oh, sorry, which is in the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5th column. And you can see, again, of course, number one is a no-in-migration after 2010, 980,000 in the year 2040. And then the highest is, at the bottom, increased lifespan, 1,132,000. And then, Department of Finance is roughly the same number. The general plan's capacity, which is our forecast, is the second lowest. So it is a conservative projection. There are several ways to look at individual cities, and I won't dwell on this, this was more important to VCOG than perhaps to the board as a whole. But the last line there, at the, is the unincorporated county. There are three ways to look at the individual growth. This one is as each city's share of the total county's growth. And you can see, for example, in Camarillo on the far right, 7, 7.9% of the county, and the county itself, the unincorporated, at 11.7. In general, Oxnard grows from 20 to 25% of all county growth, then remains a 25% in this forecast. That's somewhat of a policy decision. Moore Park has a tremendous percentage increase, although the numbers aren't as big as Oxnard. Camarillo, Fillmore, Santa Paula have steady increases of their share, and then the other cities have a gradual decrease. Obviously, if some cities increase their share of the county growth, other cities have to decrease. The second way to look at the growth is as a percent, each city's percent of the growth in that time period. Again, you can see that the unincorporated county in the bottom right would be 4.8% of the growth in the, in the period 2000 to 2040, which is obviously less than most of the cities. There's no one dominant pattern here. Oxnard spikes and then drops back to 25%. Camarillo is smaller numbers, but similar. Fillmore and Ojai have a steady increase. Some cities decline, they're kind of moving in all directions. And this is just their, each city's share of the entire growth for that period. Finally, this is the growth of each city compared to their own population. And, for example, in Camarillo, by the year, well, this goes back to 1980, to kind of give a big picture. In the far-right column, Camarillo roughly doubles in population, 110% compared to their 1980 population. The county would grow by not quite 24% compared to its, the unincorporated county, 1980 population. And again, in terms of this percentage number, Moore Park, Fillmore have the highest percentage. They're rather young cities, and, or have some growth. Oxnard would drop to 7, and the other cities are just slightly above or below.
Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
I see, in, you know, that 20, 2040 there, then percent growth, I see, you know, Ventura at 13%, I see Moore Park and Thousand Oaks at 1.4 and 1.2%.
Yes, yes.
Does that mean that those cities are saying there won't be any growth between 2020 and 2040?
They, and some of the others, to some extent, consider themselves after a certain period as build-out cities. And they don't anticipate, or currently plan for, general plan, higher densities, or annexations.
Okay, thank you.
Again, some of the, this number is based on the forecast. The forecast is based on each city's own method of giving us a number for 2020 and 2040. So some cities perhaps were a little more conservative in their assumptions than others. And that ends my presentation.
I have one question, and that is, this is for staff. Are all these PowerPoints available? Can we get copies of them? It really helps us if we have the copies.
Electronic.
I'll pass it on to CEO and clerk. It really helps us if we have the PowerPoint right here with us.
Right. That's, that's a lot of great information. That's wonderful.
And I just want to thank my fellow workers here for indulging me with the term decapolis, which I started off as sort of a joke, and, of course, it's Greek for 10 cities. Sorry, we left out the county, I don't know the word for 11.
It's not unusual.
Okay.
So, if I could, if I could ask you just one other question. Based on where you're coming, those are based on current policies, cities have and the county has, right?
To, as they interpret them, somewhat differently within each city. For example, I can speak for Oxnard, where the city council reviewed our numbers, and we purposely took a conservative post-SOR approach, that we didn't want to put out any kind of significant change post-2020, that would perhaps become and take on a life of its own, and be a, a policy.
Well, I guess that's what I was asking, because we know SOR comes to an end, and we're assuming that it's just going to continue that way, right? Okay, just make sure I understood that. Okay, good. Great, thank you.
Good assumption to make.
Yeah. That's right.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Chris. Just, Supervisor Bennett, if I may, had the one question, 2010, and Nancy Settle went upstairs to get the answer for you. In fact, I'll just give you this. The 2010 answer, however, that you were searching for in the 2000 forecast that we did, was 836,000. And these are on our website. Yeah, is that right? Yeah. 2005? Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, the top of it's forward and the back part. This, this is forward and that's back. And the red thingy is, the red thingy.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm Debbie Millay, from the Ventura County Planning Division. The other one.
Here's another pointer, if you want to use it.
I'm here to present the vacant land study. This is basically an update of the original vacant land study, which you may remember from 2002. The basic goal of the study is to inventory the supply of vacant land available for development, and compare it to growth projections, to determine whether we have enough vacant land to accommodate the projected growth. In terms of the methodology, I, to get the vacant land inventory, I basically started with the one I had done in '02, sent it out to the cities for their review, they updated it and corrected it, sent it back to me, and that was our vacant land study, vacant land inventory. In order to calculate the capacity, we used their general plan designations. For example, if the residential designation was eight units per acre, we calculated it eight units per acre. If the residential land density was a, was a range, like 8 to 12 units per acre, we used the mid-range, that would be 10 in that example. Just to point out, that's probably overstating the actual number of units that are going to be built, as you all are, I think, are familiar with. It's very rare for a project to come in at the maximum density allowed by the general plan, so to a certain extent, we may have overstated the capacity of the land to absorb residential growth. In terms of the industrial, commercial, institutional, we used just standard jobs-per-acre factors that pertain in planning. We then compared the capacity to projected growth in households and jobs from 2005 to 2035. We're a little bit off in the previous study, because they were looking at a horizon of 2040, but at the time, I was preparing this study, the best numbers we had were 2035, we hadn't worked out the 2040 numbers, so I had to proceed with those. Again, Chris Williams mentioned the jobs-housing balance. Jobs-housing balance is a really crucial factor in designing sustainable communities. Basically, if you have your housing and your jobs in approximate balance in your community, at least the people who live there afford the opportunity to live and work in the same community. That reduces commute times, it reduces the impact on the transportation infrastructure, reduces consumption of non-renewable resources, reduces pollution, so it's, it's a good goal to strive for. And so if the projected growth through 2035 did not achieve jobs-housing balance, we tinkered with the projections to see what it would take in order to achieve that housing balance, and it's a purely theoretical exercise. Just a brief summary of the conclusions, that the growth projections might not be realistic, that projected growth might not achieve household balance, that the supply of vacant land is insufficient to accommodate the projected growth, and that some jurisdictions in this county will soon reach the point where they can't realistically accommodate the growth that's projected for them. And then to go into a little more detail in some of those, to some of those conclusions, in terms of the growth projections being a little bit unrealistic, that residential growth seems to be unevenly distributed across the county. Some of the larger cities, for example, Thousand Oaks, show a numeric increase in households that's actually less than the increases for smaller cities, such as Santa Paula and Fillmore. And so I need to backtrack on one point here. There's a difference between dwelling units and households, and the difference is the vacancy rate. So if you have a vacancy rate of 5%, then it takes 100 house, dwelling units to accommodate 95 households. The vacant land study counted dwelling units, and in order to make that comparable to the growth projections, we had to convert dwelling units to households by applying the appropriate vacancy rate, which we got from the Department of Finance. So from now on, I'm going to be talking about households, which is not the same as dwelling units. The second aspect of this growth projections being unrealistic was that the growth projections seemed to be unrelated to some of the constraints we're going to be facing, such as the shortage of vacant land, the availability of, of resources such as water supplies, and some infrastructure The second conclusion was that the jobs-household balance was not, was not really attained in 2035. Two jurisdictions, Ojai and Oxnard, are and would stay in balance. One jurisdiction, Moore Park, goes from housing-rich to being in balance, and the county went from very slightly housing-rich to being just above the equilibrium. I should have brought this up again. The equilibrium range for Ventura County is considered to be 1.10 to 1.34. That is 1.10 to 1.34 jobs per household, and if you are within that range, then you're considered to be within equilibrium. Two of the jurisdictions are and would stay housing-rich, that's Fillmore and Santa Paula. Four jurisdictions are and would stay jobs-rich, that's Camarillo, Port Juani, Thousand Oaks, and Ventura. And then Simi Valley went from housing-rich to jobs-rich. But getting back to the ones that were jobs-rich, we calculated these ratios based on city boundaries, and that's kind of an artificial line to draw, and particularly, I think, in the case of Camarillo and Thousand Oaks. Camarillo has some fairly large, unincorporated residential communities around it, there's the Heights, Las Poses Estates, and the Santa Rosa Valley. Thousand Oaks is in a very similar situation. They have Casa Canajo, Lynn Ranch, Ventu Park, Oak Par, Oak Park, all these other residential communities that are around them. Now, it really wasn't part of the study to try and go out and delineate what an appropriate jobs shed would be for each city, but I think if we did, and realistically should, take into account the presence of these residential communities, Camarillo and Thousand Oaks, both would be either within equilibrium or very close to it, since they were jobs-rich. And just another point on that, the cities of Oxnard and Port Juani are And just another point on that, the cities of Oxnard and Port Juaniemi are so close that they should realistically be considered one jobs-housing balance unit.
Is this where they are now or where they're projected to be?
This, this would be, this goes from two. In other words, two jurisdictions are and would stay in balance, are at '05 and would stay through 2035. And then one goes from in balance to balance. So it's kind of a then and future.
Where they are.
Yeah. And again, if you look at the cities of Oxnard and Port Juaniemi, Oxnard is in balance but kind of on the housing-rich side. Port Juaniemi is jobs-rich, but considering that Oxnard's much bigger than Port Juaniemi, if we calculated those at, as a single unit, I think they would probably both be in equilibrium. No surprises here. The supply of vacant land is insufficient. None of the 10 cities has sufficient vacant residential land and it's probably worse than that because as I pointed out, the way we set the calculation up, we probably overestimated the, the number of units that would be built on the residential land. So many of the cities would be looking at running out of residential land somewhere in the next five to, five to 10 years.
What are the cities' ratios of commercial land to residential?
Greatly varying. That's kind of what the jobs-housing balance gets at. You know, the ones that are housing-rich, they have way too much housing. And if you have a copy of the study in front of you, on page four, it shows the jobs-housing balance in '05 and then on the jobs-housing balance in 2035. So that gives you a, a pretty quick snapshot. If it's over 1.34, they're jobs-rich. If it's less than 1.10, they're housing-rich.
So page, page four?
Page four of part two?
Oh, of part two.
I'm sorry, I'm on part two here. Yeah. And there should be a table three dash, two dash three, jobs-housing balance. I can pass this around if that's not.
That's fine.
Okay. So again, as I was pointing out, that the study may overstate the jurisdiction's ability to absorb residential growth since its, residential development is almost always developed below the maximum density allowed.
Okay. And this, and, and does this assume, this assumes that you're using the city's current density allocations?
Their general plan designations for the vacant land in question.
This doesn't assume a movement towards smart growth principles and?
No, we'd like to be able, we'd like to have the basis to create such a study, but we, we'd have to make a lot of assumptions.
Sure. Right, I'm just saying.
That would be good.
So if cities move to smart growth principles, then you would, then this whole analysis would change in terms of how much vacant land there was.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
You know, for example, if we went to more mixed-use things where you would have residential on top of the commercial, that could greatly alleviate the, the issue with insufficient vacant land for residential. I think that's a key point, that, that the low maximum allow density is a key point for all the general plans in the cities. One other comment, I'm sorry, the third one down, that the county's vacant residential land is ill-suited. You notice the first one said all 10 cities lack sufficient vacant residential land. In theory, the county has enough, but in practice, what this county needs is farmworker housing developed in proximity to agricultural land. The vacant land that we have available for housing is large lot rural developments in the Santa Monica Mountains, you know, that, that type of situation, which although the land is there in theory, in practice, it's not going to meet the type of need that we have. So. And then six cities lack sufficient commercial industrial land, four cities in the county have enough. Sorry. Moore Park, Ojai, Port Juaniemi, Santa Paula, Thousand Oaks and Ventura, the ones that lack sufficient commercial industrial land. But as Supervisor Bennett pointed out, if we, you know, particularly for the four that have sufficient and, and even those that don't have sufficient, they're, the gap is much less than it is for residential land. So simply allowing additional residential development, you know, mixed uses on that kind of land could.
If you went to mixed-use development, you'd be dramatically changing your jobs-housing balance.
Yes, yeah.
Because you'd be doing the housing and the, and the development at the same time.
Yeah.
And solving the vacant land problem.
Right. And particularly if you went to, dare I say, at higher density development, you know, so you could, you could also alleviate the insufficient land for commercial industrial purposes there. The final conclusion was that some jurisdictions are reaching more or less an absolute limit of their ability to absorb growth. This is based on three types of constraints, geographic constraints, legal constraints and resource infrastructure constraints. Many of the cities face immovable geographic constraints to expansion. The city of Ventura, for example, is bounded by the Pacific Ocean on the west and south, Santa Clara River on the south, the Ventura River on the west and the hillsides, which are steep and unsuitable for any kind of dense development on the north. So that in terms of that city, their only realistic options for development are onto the prime agricultural land there, north of the Santa Clara River, and that very small area on the north end of the city, just east of the Ventura River. You know, those are intractable constraints. The city of Port Juaniemi, I think, faces possibly the worst constraints. They're surrounded by the city of Oxnard, the Pacific Ocean and, and fully developed county land. Their ability to expand outward is nil. They have a very limited supply of vacant land and in order to accommodate further growth, they're basically going to have to redevelop at a higher density, which means displacing the low and moderate income families that are living there now. So it's not a wonderful choice for them. Legal constraints, this county is absolutely unique in the state and probably in the nation for the overlapping network of legal constraints to expansion. The guidelines for orderly develop, development restrict urban growth to the cities, reserving the land in between for agriculture and open space. The green belts reinforce that restriction. And last but certainly not least, there are the SOR curb initiatives, which require the approval of the electorate before the city or the county, in whichever case, can expand beyond the designated boundaries of those, of those initiatives. And I don't know that it would be a reasonable assumption to believe that they're going to sunset at the various times that they're expected to, but they might be renewed by the voters. And there's just no way to predict what's going to happen with these, when these kind of constraints collide with the state mandates that we are given to provide housing and with the free market pressures that we're going to, but, but there is going to be that collision. There is resource infrastructure constraints, basically water. All of Southern California is facing this steadily worsening conflict between growth pressures and limited water supplies. That just is. Recent court decisions are requiring applicants to demonstrate realistic water supplies prior to project approval. That's going to really bring this conflict into focus. And just to give a, a local example, the city of Ojai basically has enough water supply to meet its current population. It really doesn't have much for expansion. Another type of infrastructure constraint that we're running into is traffic. Again, to use the Ojai Valley, the county is restricted from approving much additional development up in the Ojai Valley based on the traffic issues on Route 33 and the access there. And this whole problem with the resource and infrastructure constraints is exacerbated by the budget limitations that we're facing. The state budget, the national budget, the funds that we used to be able to get to build our way out of these problems are no longer available. They're going to be very limited. And again, we just can't tell what's going to happen when mandates for growth and, and free market pressures run into our lack of water, inability to build our way out of our traffic issues and so on and so forth.
Supervisor Foy, while we're on this slide, he just asked me, so what are we going to do, right? And so I, I just, I wanted to, I, I wanted to offer this because I think it's very germane that, that we're on this slide. You know, a great line was written by the Op Ed editor of the Los Angeles Times back when there was a whole debate over SOR and stuff. And the question was this, he said, either way, you're going to run out of land. Los Angeles County has essentially run out of vacant land, right? Either way, you're going to run out of land. The question is, and then you're going to have to get creative. And that's what you're talking about. These, these constraints, whether you pave over all the farmland in Ventura County or not, when you pave it over, you'll still be at the same spot. You'll be out of that land, I mean, in Los Angeles County. When that happens, you're going to have to get creative. And that's the mixed use, that's the smart growth, that's all of that stuff. The question simply is, I think, for Ventura County, are we going to get creative after we pave over all the farmland or before we pave over all the farmland? But either way, you have to do that. That's, I think, the fundamental question. So in answer to the question, you have to, you have to start, we have to begin that process of, of having people, you know, genuinely be educated about the benefits of smart growth principles and moving forward with that.
You know, and just, just to further elaborate on your comment about paving over the agricultural land. The agricultural industry in this county is huge. It's a, it's a irreplaceable in terms of our, our prime agricultural land, our benign climate that allows four, four crops per year. You know, it's an income generator. I think the Hanson study years ago proved that. And in just considering the possibility of paving over the agricultural land, I think we need to realize that the agricultural industry depends on a minimum amount of land and agriculture in the area in order to support the infrastructure that they need, the packing houses and the suppliers and the fertilizer and all that kind of stuff. And once we drop below that tipping point, then we might as well give up the rest of it. But again, I think that's something we need to think about. And so where do we go from here? It's beyond the scope of this study to attempt to answer these problems. That's far beyond my ability or our ability. And I think the thing that needs to be pointed out is that we can't do this by ourselves, that the 10 cities in the county need to work on a regional approach to address these problems. We need to work with SCAG in the state to generate growth projections that are realistic for our, for our circumstances, for our condition. We need to work together to accommodate growth while preserving prime agricultural land, as we've talked about before, that, that the agricultural industry depends on. We're going to have to address water quantity and quality issues. We've already got, you know, headway under that with the Prop 50 money, but that's not going to go away. Transportation, we have a new head of VCTC and I know they're aggressively out there looking for money to try and build the things that are needed to address our pressing transportation problems, but the funding is not what we need. And we need to work together to, to address that. And, you know, getting back to the jobs-housing balance and getting smart and smart growth, we need to work together to create sustainable communities that have the smallest possible carbon footprint. So, you know, I'm sorry, I don't have, can't wave a magic wand and say, okay, this is how we're going to solve all these problems. But there they are and we know what they are and we need to work together to address them. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions?
That was very informative, very good, very, very good. Thank you.
I, I would just comment, if I may. Definitely the need for a regional approach is necessary in order to achieve both the population distribution, but also looking at AB 32 regarding our requirements to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, not just become neutral. And, and from what I understand, that most of those carbon emissions are coming from transportation as opposed to the buildings that we build. So that to me also will require a regional approach to how to reduce basically our vehicle emissions.
Yeah, I didn't get into the details of what an effective transportation system consists of in terms of mass transit versus individual transit. And just on the, the regional approach thing, we made this presentation to VCOG last Thursday and I thought it was interesting that as I was kind of getting ready, you know, I was going over my notes and thinking of, you know, talking about regional approach, that the, the chair member Holden of Oxnard was going, and we need to do these things on a regional approach. And so I had to get up there and say, man, you just gave my conclusions. But just saying that to say that, you know, I think we're all reaching that realization.
Thank you. I regret I was not able to attend VCOG. I was at the Local Government Commission and.
Well, you just saw it all.
That's right. Thank you very much. We're looking at a, a city in China that went from 12,000, about the size of Port Juaniemi, to 12 million between 1980 and now.
What percentages are?
Well, and, and the focus of that presentation, Rick Cole made it, was that the global impacts to us are, are very significant. And, and the more we're able to do the local level with local dialogue and local solutions and regional cooperation, the better positioned we'll be. That, that was some startling global growth information going on. It was good.
Okay, you have another speaker?
No.
That's it?
The recommended actions are to accept the due reports and to adopt the general plan capacity forecast if you so desire.
Wonderful. Any more questions on that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second?
Excellent work.
And we'll vote. Yeah, that was excellent work, very informative. Very good. I'm glad you're doing that work, but I like listening to it.
And thank you, thank you, um, thank you, Oxnard, for participating with us.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Please, Oxnard, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry about being late for our 11:30s. But we will move on to our, our presentation here. And this one is the proclamation for our mediation week. Thanks for coming. This mediation is dispute resolution process, which is a neutral third party facilitates communication between the parties to dispute, to help each of them reach a voluntary and mutual acceptable agreement. I don't know how you guys do that. That's great, though. I've been in some of those. That's tough. The state of California's promoted mediation efforts through the enactment of several mediation statutes, including the Dispute Resolution Program Act, under which counties may fund dispute resolution programs through the court filings. The availability and success of mediation programs are largely attributed to partnership of the courts, communities, dispute resolution organizations, local government agencies, mediation organizations, staff and volunteers, and many of them have contributed a significant amount of time and resources towards conducting these mediations. In Ventura County, the Ventura County District Attorney's Office, Consumer Mediation Section and the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement have worked tirelessly to provide dispute resolution services to the residents of Ventura County in resolving disputes that might otherwise have been part of our, of the process in our court systems. And anything we can do to keep people out of court is, is, is great. Anyway, today I'd like to present two of these resolutions to the following two groups. The District Attorney's Office Consumer Mediation, and we're going to also have these staff members from the Consumer Mediation Section. And then this Ventura County Dispute Settlement group. I think we have a couple of different people here. We got Gil and Sandra, right, that are here? Good, good. And I think we also have some people from the District Attorney's. Greg? Yep, okay. You guys want to come up and talk a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. On behalf of District Attorney Greg Cotton, it's truly an honor to accept this resolution from the Ventura County Board of Supervisors acknowledging March 16 through 22 as mediation week. The District Attorney's Consumer Mediation Section was started in 1979 by Michael D. Bradbury and it was a program designed not to prosecute criminal cases, but instead to help provide information to consumers and businesses to resolve their disputes through conciliation. Since its inception, the Consumer Mediation Section has worked with thousands of businesses and consumers alike to resolve disputes in an efficient and effective manner, manner at minimal cost to the taxpayers. And that's sort of the key to the whole thing. I know Supervisor Foy, that's important to you. The Consumer Mediation Section wouldn't be a success without the support of your board and the work of the Chief Executive Office in promoting the California Dispute Resolution Funding Program, which provides significant resources to our program. The Consumer Mediation Section and our dispute resolution colleagues in the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement are both able to provide mediation programs that are tailored to the needs of the citizens of Ventura County because your board has chosen to make this program and others like it a priority in Ventura County. This year, with the support of your board, we hope to expand the District Attorney's Mediation and Consumer Section into the East County by establishing a new office in the East County Courthouse. Thank you for your commitment to mediation week.
Chairman Foy, Executive Officer Robinson, Board. My name is Gil Compos. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Ventura Center for Dispute Settlement. We also, oh, and with me is Sandra Rubio, our executive director. And seated is Lynda Catherine Lay, who is the analyst administrator for the DCP program that provides a large portion of our funding. We provide mediation services and arbitration services to community, the courts, and have recently enacted a, a small claims mediation program with mediation, with a small claims court. It's been very, very successful, so much so that we've expanded it to Simi Valley's courthouse as well. In concurrent with this, you know, we appreciate, you know, the recognition that you're doing us in, on this and acknowledging, you know, the importance of ADR in their community in this county. Recent things that have happened, like in the junior high school district, have, have highlighted some of the need that not only do we need to provide ADR services to the courts, but also the community, to the level to prevent and identify and mitigate, you know, child-on-child violence and other community services like this. And your recognition of this, of our, our services and that of the District Attorney's Offices is going to go a long way to helping us provide those services. We also have, in concurrent with this, we, we celebrate mediation week by having an annual dinner, which we're all invited to, that recognizes the advocate for ADR and the practitioner here. And this year, the advocate is Commissioner Burrell, who's gone beyond the yeoman's uh, uh. Oh, I thought you were waving at me. So that, that being said, I wish, I just wanted to thank you again, and if you have any questions, do you want to say something?
No, no, just thank you very much.
And thank you. Thank you for the work.
Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate what you do, and I know how hard it is, but I appreciate what you do for the taxpayers and saving that, and then keeping people out of court. It's, it's nice when you can settle these things without going to court. So let me present these to you.
Can I bring our staff up here?
Sure.
Bring our staff, I'll get them. That's great. This is Chris Rose supervising senior attorneys. All right. All right. Here's the one for District Attorney. Want to be together in a picture of this, okay? All right, we got this. Then we'll...
Can you get everybody in? There you go. Right there. Yeah, right there. Okay, one, two.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ready? One, two. There you go. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks so much. Thank you very much. Thank you. And Supervisor Bennett?
Thank you very much. It's a real pleasure to get to present this, this resolution declaring this Developmentally Disabilities Awareness Month. And I see Fred and Harriet back there, and could you guys both come on down, please, as I read these words about this? And we really appreciate both of you being here and representing the developmentally disabled in Ventura County. And I'm going to read this resolution. It's fairly short, and I think it's, it says the appropriate things that we should consider here today, but a resolution of the Board of Supervisors proclaiming March 2008 Developmentally Disabilities Awareness Month in Ventura County. And whereas a developmentally disability is a condition which today affects more than 7 million American children, adults, and their families, the most effective way to overcome problems associated with understanding people with developmental disabilities is through providing information to increase that understanding. We encourage all citizens to realize that individuals with developmental disabilities should be afforded opportunities in the community, including full access to housing, educational, employment, and recreational activities. Opportunities for citizens with developmental disabilities to function as independently and productively as possible must be fostered in our community. And to the great credit of all the volunteers and people that are out there, more than 800 individuals with developmental and other disabilities receive educational, vocational, and residential services through the ARC of Ventura County's programs located throughout Ventura County. The ARC of Ventura County is celebrating over 54 years of service to individuals with disabilities and their families, and the county does proclaim March 2008 as Developmentally Disabilities Awareness Month. And if you've had a chance to visit, and I'm sure most of you have, if you've had personal contact with some of the residents in Ventura County that have developmental disabilities, it is, you talk about doing God's work, you know, when you're trying to help those people. You really are in this situation. So I want to thank both of you for being here to represent all of those people and all the volunteers here today, and I'd like to have some sage words of advice from you as I bring down this resolution.
Well, thank you very much. I'm going to let Harriet speak. She does a lot more of God's work than me. So, Harriet?
You know, I, I feel so blessed to be able to live in this county and to share moments like this with you and with the people in the community. My heart is so full right now. We have one of the biggest blessings in the world. We have people, people with intellectual disabilities, intellectual challenges, but their hearts are incredibly pure. Sometimes I feel that they don't hear with their ears, they hear with their hearts. The simplicity that comes out magnifies the amount of love that's in them, and we grow. I think that they, they're the teachers and we're the students, and we thank you so much for everything that you do for them. Steve, your smile is absolutely wonderful. It's absolutely wonderful, and you know what's in our hearts. This man next to me has done so much in the community, but I want you to be a messenger for us. Would you please tell him about the R-word and what he can't say? Please?
Well, I, I'm the CEO for the ARC of Ventura County, Fred Robinson. It's nice to be here again and accept this proclamation. We've had many opportunities to partner with the county on services and supports for the people we serve through the CDBG program, various transportation projects, are vacating the Lewis Road property, which you helped us do quite successfully, and I want to tell you a little bit about our latest initiative, and that is, we're on a national mission to eliminate the R-word. And I have a little graphic here that I would like to show everyone. The R-word simply is the, the R-word. We don't even like to enunciate it. And I thank you, Supervisor Bennett. We are the ARC of Ventura County. We're not the Association for Retarded Citizens anymore. You won't see that word, and we're trying to get it taken out of our schools. The entertainment industry has frequently made reference to people with developmental disabilities in very derogatory terms. And I wrote an op-ed piece that was in last week's Star. You may have saw it, about Time to Retire the R-word. I happened to bring five copies with me today in case you didn't see it. So can I give this to the clerk and let you guys look at that? So again, thank you for the proclamation, all the good work that you do. And on another note, I must commend all of you on the board for your very wise and good choice to appoint Marty Robinson as your new executive officers. And I must make a disclaimer, we're not related. So congratulations, and I know she'll do a good job. She was at our NAMI Walk kickoff luncheon last week. The Mentally Ill is another project that I work a lot on, and she has agreed to co-chair the event this year and be a signature supporter. So thank you, Marty, and wish you Godspeed and good luck in your new job.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Harriet. Harriet Weigle. Weigle. Don't cover Steve's face now. You gotta get that smile in there. Thank you for all your good work, as always.
Harriet, you going to come back and do a moment of affirmation for us one time?
Okay.
Okay, we'll make sure we call you. Thanks. Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the pleasure of being able to present this next resolution. And we have a wonderful contingent of women. I invite them all down. I, I will have whoever wants to be the speaker on this to introduce everyone so I don't miss someone. I know I had a list, but I think it's, we have a larger contingent than my list addresses. So what we have before us today is the opportunity to proclaim March 2008 as National Women's History Month, and the theme is Women's Art, Women's Vision. And this is just a wonderful theme, as we know that women's lives once should always be honored, and that the originality, beauty, imagination, and the multiple dimensions of those lives should be honored. Women's Art, Women's Vision, again, is the chosen theme for 2008 and for National Women's History Month, which is March. The history of women and art is quintessential women's history. It is a story of amazing accomplishments by women, many of these written out of history. And what we're trying to do here is to ensure that these endeavors and the endeavors of women throughout our nation are never forgotten. Women's history has played a critical role in women's art, women's vision, and they have provided special opportunities and discoveries in the celebration of women's visual arts with various mediums that have helped to expand our perception of ourselves and others. Ventura County women are following in the footsteps of our four mothers by working with the Ventura County Commission for Women, who we have representatives here, the AAUW Camarillo Local Chapter, the League of Women Voters, the Coalition to End Family Violence, the National Women's Political Caucus, the Women's Economic Justice Project, the Reproductive Rights Network, and other organizations to retain the rights and resolve the issues that women still face in our nation. So it is a pleasure on behalf of the board to join other women and men around the world in celebrating March 8th as International Women's Day, and celebrating the month of March as the Women's History Project Month, and in celebrating today, Women's Art, Women's Vision. And I invite you, please, to speak with us and share with us the celebration. I see you've provided materials. I'll step down to present the resolution.
Thank you very much. I am Mary Pallett. I am the current chair of the Ventura County Commission for Women, and I want to thank Chairman Foy for scheduling and inviting us here today, and the remainder of the board as well. It is an honor and a privilege to be acknowledged, especially during these stressful times where we are facing severe cuts to our state, our community, and our county. And the Ventura County Commission for Women, which I have many with me here today, we do work tirelessly to encourage, empower, and educate women in Ventura County. And 2008 is especially significant because we do have a woman running for president for the first time, where we actually have a chance to have a woman president. I know Supervisor Foy may cringe because she is a Democrat, but if we look at this from a historical perspective and a nonpartisan perspective, it is amazing what she is showing not only our generation, but our children, our daughters, my daughters, that women can work to achieve and reach their goals and not be disregarded simply because they are a woman. And also that we look not so much for treatment or equal treatment, but treatment as equals. So I want to thank you on behalf of the commission, and I do have Eileen Rendy, who is the current president of the AAUW Local Chapter Camarillo, and fellow commissioners, we have Lee Rigan, Diane Goodrow, Carmen Hurd, Elvia Guzar, Nancy Lee Phillips, Sharon Hillbrent, Shante Morgan Durisso, and then, of course, Eileen. So thank you for honoring us today.
I'm Eileen Rendy from Camarillo AAUW, which is the American Association of University Women. And it seems really a propole. I'm very grateful that you are giving us this award this month or this commendation because this is the month where AAUW in Camarillo has 90 women going to local elementary schools telling students about remarkable women in history. And it's been a wonderful month. We have had fifth-grade students who have participated as Mother Teresa, being this high, and other characters as well. We are also an advocacy group. We advocate for equity for women, both in the working world and in education. And locally, we are a support group for women and for girls. We raise scholarships for seventh-grade girls to have math and science camps in the summer, and we raise money for scholarships for reentry students for the university. So we, we are active and busy, and it's, and we're not always that well-known, so it's a real pleasure, and I'm very honored that you have recognized us this month. Thank you.
Okay. Mary, I'll present this to you to share with others, and we can certainly make copies for anyone who would like to have copies. And what I'd like to do is have us move over here in this corner, and we'll take a group shot.
Do you want everybody over here?
Yes. Me, too. We can always take pictures, and we'll share.
I'm going to email them to you.
Any board member wish to?
Follow up?
And we appreciate that we have an office in our office.
A real office with a sign on the door.
Thank you very much, ladies. All right, we've got our 1:30, but we'll go back into closed session now, and then We'll come back out of closed session and go on to item number 27. Ms. Francis?
Good afternoon, Chairman Foy, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Nancy Francis with the Planning Division, and this afternoon I am here with proposed amendments to the noncoastal zoning ordinance and the subdivision ordinance in an effort to provide some standards for mobile home park conversion subdivision requests. Just a way of background, in January, your board directed the Planning Division to prepare -- Planning Division along with County Council's office to prepare proposed amendments and specifically directed that the Planning Division and County Council use an ordinance that had been adopted by the County of Sonoma and which, at least up to this point, has survived one legal challenge. So the -- and the general purpose of the proposed amendments is essentially to regulate conversion of mobile home parks to resident ownership. And then the purposes of the amendments are listed on the slide number two on the screens, but essentially, they were -- it's designed to implement state laws with regard to conversion of mobile home parks, specifically subdivision map act section 66427.5, which discusses park owner-initiated conversions. Then it also, once we want to make sure that such conversions are bona fide conversions, and I'll discuss that a little bit more, and that would be in accordance with state law. And then you'll see that there are some further goals that are stated on both on the slide and in your staff report. And a complete analysis of the proposed amendments is included in your board letter as Exhibit 1. Following preparation of the proposed amendments, the planning staff brought the item to the Planning Commission on February 7th. During the discussion of the ordinance amendment, the staff made a distinction between the two types of mobile home park conversions that are available under state law. And the first one is called, generally referred to as an ROP, which is a resident-owned park. And these are -- this situation, the -- all of the residents band together as a group to purchase the entire park in total, and then they would have control over the park and whatnot. These have not ultimately been terribly successful in California, particularly in Ventura County, because it's been found to be largely economically infeasible because of the cost of, frankly, the land underlying the mobile home parks. A second mechanism provided for in the subdivision map act is where park owners themselves can initiate a subdivision map, essentially analogous to a condominium project where homeowners, upon approval of the map, would be able to purchase the land underneath their mobile home unit, coach, as well as an undivided interest in all of the common areas within the park. And upon the sale of the majority of the lots, at some point, the control of the park then comes to the homeowners association, which is then responsible for the management of the common areas of the mobile home park. So it's an opportunity or a way to provide ownership for mobile home park residents. We have not had any -- all of the ones that have been initiated thus far in Ventura County have been initiated by park owners and not by residents in conjunction with the park owners. And in fact, your board recently adopted a map, a proposed map, for a project out in Ojai, which puts them on the road to being able to create these. Essentially, what your board directed or what's contained in the Sonoma ordinance has to do with an item that's required under state law, which is called the Tenant Impact Report. And the Tenant Impact Report is designed to gauge the interest of residents in the park for the possibility of being able to own their parcels. What happens when a map records on one of these condominium projects and the first parcel is sold, the entirety of the park comes out from under the county's mobile home rent control ordinance. And with that happening, there has been concern in other areas, particularly that the conversions, what are called in the law even bona fide conversions, meaning that at least a percentage of the residents of the park are interested in potentially purchasing their own parcel. The surveys are -- the state law right now lacks a lot of specificity as to what these tenant impact reports contain. And so it is an effort on the part of Sonoma, and now being proposed by Ventura County, to try to provide some definition to what is bona fide. And essentially, what our proposed ordinance amendment include are similar to Sonoma, which is that at least 20% of the residents within the park need to respond that they would be interested, potentially interested, in purchasing their parcels. Below that, below 20%, it's considered to be a not bona fide conversion and would be the basis for denying the request to convert. There is some more language that also discusses how to determine what is bona fide in these sort of matters. Again, as I mentioned, that we are using the Sonoma ordinance as an example. Before I go any farther, I would like to make just a couple of housekeeping map changes. One is that I have provided you with an errata sheet and a page from Exhibit 6, which is the ordinance in your packet, and it's just to correct a typo in changing the word "that" to "van" as shown on the errata sheet. And this particular change was discussed and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, and I failed to make the change in the document Exhibit 6 in your packet. So this is my after-the-fact effort to complete the paper trail on that. Also, number one, recommended action in your board letter indicates, at the end of the first sentence, that we are operating under provisions of Section D of the staff report, and that D should be changed to E, please, if you would be so kind. Okay. All right. Having said that -- oh, right, I know. Last point. During the Planning Commission hearing, the discussion really centered around what is an appropriate level of response by mobile home park residents to establish a bona fide conversion. Sonoma has used the figure 20%, and we have proposed 20% in an effort to say similar to Sonoma. The Planning Commission, however, although not recommending a specific number greater than 20%, did recommend or ask or suggest that your board consider a percentage greater than 20%. In an effort to understand where Sonoma came up with 20%, we did contact Sonoma County. And essentially, what Sonoma said is they felt that the 20% represented a figure that was low enough to reasonably reflect the tenants' interests and readily defensible as a threshold for park owners to achieve the support that the conversion is indeed bona fide. So that is where the 20% came from, and you have in your board letter the suggestion from the Planning Commission that your board might wish to consider a figure different than the 20%. The Planning Commission did recommend on a 4-0 vote that your board adopt the proposed ordinance amendments and put these into effect, let's see, especially the part -- okay, and the recommendation that you consider the ceiling, changing the ceiling from 20%. But the recommendation is that you adopt the proposed ordinance amendments. And I would be happy to answer any questions at this point.
Do we have any questions? Okay.
I was gonna ask, you may not have a recommendation. The Planning Commission is recommending the adoption of this -- I mean, the planning staff recommended the adoption of this at the Planning Commission, correct?
The 20%.
Yes.
Yes.
And at the 20% level.
Yes.
And after you -- and they asked you to kind of take a look at the Sonoma thing and consider it, after you've considered it, have you changed your recommendation? Or is your recommendation still 20%?
Well, we've been operating under the direction that we should stick as closely to the ordinance, which has passed already one judicial test, if possible.
To be certain it'll be defensible in court.
That's right. So I don't have a different figure.
Okay. No other questions, and I guess we'll open a public hearing. And we have some cards, speakers. Ms. Wingate?
Good afternoon, Chairman and board members. This is my first time to even be to a meeting, so I'm a little bit shaky.
We're glad to have you.
I live -- my name is Betty Wingate, and I live at Stardust Mobile Home Park in Ventura, and I've lived there for three years. And when I purchased my mobile home, I was retired, and I'm still retired. And I purchased it with the intent that it was -- I picked that park because the rent was reasonable, and I would be able to afford that for the rest of my years. And this is something that we all figure our own budget and what have you. And last year, Stardust had a meeting and notified all of us that they are proposing to conduise. They're in the process now of conduising. And our park and the residents that live in our park, the majority -- And our park and the residents that live in our park, the majority, it used to be a senior park, it's now a family park, but the majority of the residents are still seniors. One of them is, one of my friends that doesn't live far away from me is 88 years old, very active, still very active. And the majority of the people in the park, I would say, are seniors that are retired on fixed incomes. Well, with the failing economy that we are all facing today, in fact, Federal Reserve dropped the interest rate 3/4% today, that means our CDs go down too. So that was one of the things I invested in. Well, I don't have as much income as I used to have because of our economy. And if it comes to the point where our mobile home park does conduise, I'm very afraid that we're going to be pitted against each other. The people that are going to purchase the mobile homes are going to be our enemies. And I see it already happening now for some of the people that are interested. We've got this group and we've got that group. And when you affect people's incomes, especially at the age of being a senior, you don't have the opportunity to make that money again. And you don't have the opportunity to get a job that you used to have that made good money. That's the facts of life. We all, we seniors all know that. We can't get that money again. And we all won't be able to make enough money to purchase the mobile, to purchase the space. Of course, none of us know what the space are going to cost us. They can't tell us that. The lawyers have told us some things didn't turn out to be correct, like Prop 13, they said we would be, if we purchased our mobile homes, we would be, this was a selling point, we would be, be able to get Prop 13 the same as the owners that own the park now. And they've owned it for 30 years. Well, they did a little research, and that ain't so. So the things that they've told us have not always been true. And that's discouraging because we can't afford to hire attorneys to fight this, at this point we can't. And we cannot, if we don't have a place to live that's reasonable, we won't, there's going to be so many people on Section 8, we won't get, we won't be able to live there. We won't be able to get assistance to live there. So where will we seniors go? I enjoy my independence, and I enjoy being able to do what I would have always planned, helping my grand, my grandchildren go to college. But it just doesn't look like with the economy that I can do that much longer. And I can't afford to buy my mobile home. I can live there because I'll be in the lower-income bracket. If this, if this is all true that they're telling us, today I don't think it's all true, what the lawyers have told us. But if I can't live in my mobile home, I have to go live with my children. Do you want Grandma living with you guys? I don't think so. I don't think that's a future we all, we want. You guys are all going to be seniors. But do you want Grandma living with you? I don't want to live with my kids. Thank you all for listening.
Good. Yes, Mr. President. I could just point out that the one thing that the speaker was referring to, she said that she qualifies under the low income, so you.
Correct. That's under $48,000 a year.
Yeah. So she would qualify for that.
$48,000 in Florida.
Right. But if she qualifies for that, what she didn't point out is that when she finally does, she bought her mobile home three years ago, probably just about at the top of the real estate market, when you think about it. When she goes to sell her mobile home, let's say X number of years from now, that low income, that rent control that she has will not pass on to the next buyer. And so consequently, when you go to sell your mobile home coach, you will not be able to sell it for anywhere near what you paid for. That's the big transfer of equity that is, I think, the biggest injustice in this because there may be a time when you need, for health reasons or whatever, to move in with your family, and you need to take that equity out. I'm sorry, Mamie, don't get to come back up.
Can I ask another question?
No, huh, right, yeah. So besides the comments that she made, I wanted to make that additional comment, which is when she needs that equity from that coach, she literally won't be able to get it if her park has conduised and she stays there as a low-income resident. And that's a tremendous, that's the biggest equity that most people in mobile home parks have. I mean, that's the biggest nest egg they have. And it will be transferred to the land, to the park owner, who will then be able to sell that land to the next person. That's, again, I just wanted to emphasize, that's the biggest injustice that I see out there, or the biggest problem out there with the current subdivision ordinance. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It would be helpful, too, if the speakers, when you speak, let us know, are you for this proposal as before or opposed to it? I can generally read, but not your minds necessarily.
Mr. Teltson, Todson? Todson?
Good afternoon, Chairman Foye and ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm pleased that we're able to be here and have the opportunity to address the issues of this ordinance. I had prepared some remarks. I've given copies to each of you. And though I'm, I still do want to read them into the public record, before I do, though, this ordinance is being presented to you as requiring a 20% minimum acceptance. What was brought before the Planning Commission was the SONOMA ordinance. And that SONOMA ordinance included quite different provision. I'll read it to you. It's from pages 16 and 17 of the materials that were presented to the Planning Commission. It's proposed Section 8213-3, Subdivision 2, Ordinance Amendments, Criteria for Conversion Application. Two parts to that, and I'm reading not my words, but the words of that ordinance. This section also sets forth local criteria for determining whether the conversion is a bona fide one, as required by Section 6645257.5, as follows. A, where the survey of resident report, and I'm skipping some words to get to the heart, shows that more than 50% of the residents' households support conversion to resident ownership, the conversion shall be presumed to be a bona fide resident conversion. That's crucial. And to present that as a, to sidestep that part this morning and present this as a 20% bona fide, I think is misleading. B, where the survey of resident report, skipping some words to get to the heart, shows that at least 20%, but not more than 50% of the residents, support the conversion to resident ownership, the subdividers shall have the burden of demonstrating that the proposed conversion is a bona fide resident conversion, and going on, that they shall demonstrate that with a viable plan, and have that, show that that is in place to convey the majority of the lots to current residents of the park within a reasonable period of time. To ignore that 50% requirement, I think, is just misleading. Let me proceed. At the Planning Commission on February 7th, we presented a five-page review of the proposed ordinance at which we cited numerous specific arguments and objections regarding the inclusion of this 20% option. And it's an option at that point. It's never been understood as anything except a secondary option. We were given to understand from the concluding remarks of members of the Planning Commission that they generally shared our concerns about that same option, but they considered themselves to be obligated under the directive from the Board of Directors, excuse me, Board of Supervisors, to bring to the board a duplicate of the SONOMA County ordinance, which was to be modified only to the extent needed to make it applicable and compatible in all respects to Ventura County. It was stated by members of the Planning Commission that their own concerns regarding the 20% option would be included in their presentation to the board. We're not aware of anything that suggests any consideration has been given to those concerns by the board. That's perhaps, I wrote this last night, and that's perhaps not quite accurate. The possibility that the 20% option or any option which diminishes the requirement for approval of a conversion by a majority of residents in a mobile home park is of great concern for each of us. On March 13, we provided a copy of the entire review that was presented to the Planning Commission and requested that copies be given to each member of the board. We hope, we really hope that has been done. If for some reason it has not been done, I have copies available with me today.
I'm going to have to have you sum up real quick. You're over time.
We hope that each member of the board will read thoroughly all of what is included in that review before making any decision and give serious consideration to what we consider to be the destructive consequences of the 20% option. I'd like to take a brief moment and read a fresh public reminder to the board, the summary statement from Page 3 of the presentation made before the Planning Commission, and it's crucial, sir.
You only got 10 seconds.
This board does not have to make the same mistake that the SONOMA County Board made. You won't let me read what I need to read, but you have it in writing.
Thank you very much.
And you do not need to make that mistake.
Thank you. Ms. Pittman? Oh, Mr. Upson?
My name is Merrell Pittman. I live in Ojai. And I am representing the Mobile Home Owners Coalition. We are a group of people organized in, actually in Ventura some years ago, to protect the people who live in mobile homes with attorneys or small claims action if the need arises. And we're speaking today on this ordinance because we don't want to see any sham conversions. The park that we live in in Ojai, 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 I forgot where we live. Anyway, I live in Ojai Villa, but about 10 or 12 years ago, our park did convert to a condominium, or the condominium concept. However, no one purchased their lots, so we have been under the rent control all these years. We're a little afraid that once the ball starts bouncing here, that it's going to bounce right into our park too. And I don't believe that we would be covered under any new ordinance that's coming out because the old law was still in effect at the time this was converted. But the main thing that we'd like to see here is actually 51% of the people that live in the park agree to purchase their lots before they would allow, before you would have allowed conversion. Another thing we'd like to know is once the price has been set on one of these lots, for how long is that going to be good for? Is that for a period of 30 days, a period of 60 days, until the current run of lots have been purchased? Or is that up at some period of time and they double the price of the lot? If they start out with a lot of $100,000 for 30 days and then go to $200,000, I don't think too many people's going to buy them. We'd also like to know if this, ZN080001, includes the entire county or just the unincorporated areas of Ventura County? Does it include the cities? And if so, the federal government tells the state what laws to use, the state tells the counties what laws to use. So how come the counties can't tell the cities what laws to use? You know, I mean, you, come down the walk. If this only includes incorporated areas of Ventura County, or the unincorporated areas, actually, and only what this ordinance covers, then what about all these cities, like Ventura City, like the city of Thousand Oaks right now that has a major problem with closing parks? We have to be, we have to include everybody. We can't just say this little group of 27 mobile home parks is included in this ordinance. It has to be county-wide. And this is, this is the reason that we're here today pushing this, is because we want to see this county-wide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pittman. Mr. Bennett?
Thank you. I've got a number of questions for, a number of questions for County Council. And one, just to clear something up, I really appreciate Mr. Pittman offering to have us be able to control the cities. We've been trying to do that for a long time. But I think this question's probably for Noel, but do we have the right to have this ordinance apply to the city?
No, you can only regulate land use in the unincorporated territory.
Okay. So while we'd like to make this ordinance apply to the cities, we can only do this in the unincorporated areas. My second question is for our other council, Mr. Oriana, and that is, does the SONOMA ordinance have the 20%, 50%, 20% to 50% requirement that we have in our ordinance?
Yeah. The SONOMA County is identical in that provision, and it's just a breakdown of what's presumed to be bona fide. If it's 50 or more, it's presumed. If it's between 20 and 50, then there's a presumption against that the owner can rebut by showing they have a plan to make the purchases. And if it's below 20, then it's presumed to not be bona fide and would just be denied.
So if it's between 20 and 50, then the burden of proof is on the owner to prove somehow that it is, but the presumption is that it's not until the owner proves it.
That's correct.
Right? So the board would sit there and would only have to, and what is the legal reason, in your opinion, what's the legal reason why SONOMA would include the 20% to 50% and not just have a 50% ordinance there?
Well, after the El Dorado case, which said that the sale of one lot was sufficient to have a conversion and take it out of rent control, the legislature passed a bill that said that it was the intent of the legislature to give the local jurisdiction the ability through a survey of support to see whether they were bona fide transactions or not. SONOMA looked at that and thought, I believe, from what I understand from the planners up there, that you could have people who didn't want to purchase but still supported the concept for their neighbors or others. And so that to establish some kind of minimum level to show that it wasn't something where a few owners and spaces were being pressured to support it and no one would purchase, or only one lot would be purchased, they established that three-part system. Why we stuck with it was because your direction was to bring back that ordinance, and that ordinance has survived a judicial challenge at the trial court level. The percentages, though, are arbitrary in the sense that they were just picked by SONOMA County.
Okay. I'd like to point these things out. Number one, this ordinance has been unanimously recommended by the Planning Commission and is also recommended by our staff that, you know, that we move forward with this. If we adopt this ordinance today, we will be only the second county in the state of California that will have an ordinance specifically designed to regulate mobile home park subdivisions. And I think, I'm hopeful that we'll do that, and I think we should be very proud of the fact that we would be only the second county in California that would have such an ordinance for this. And with respect to the argument that we should drop the, that provision, the 20% to the 50% provision, I think, and I know many mobile home residents that are out there know how often park owners have tied us up in court. And the problem is, in court, if you lose a decision, the impact of that loss can be devastating in that you can lose your rent control law, you can lose the whole thing. And in the interim, your rents can go up and everything else before you can get everything put back together. I strongly recommend that the, that the most prudent thing for us to do is adopt this ordinance like it is written right now because... ordinance like it is written right now because it follows the Sonoma ordinance that has already been litigated. You don't want to take a chance at this point in time. Now, that does not mean we can't later go and change and raise this percentage. But let's get the appellate court hearing on the Sonoma case under our belt. Let's get case law settled a little bit and give ourselves at least this very good protection here, because this protection still says, if they don't get to 20%, the burden of proof is on them to prove that they have 50%. And I think that this board is certainly going to be able to hold on that very well. But if you, if you don't do that, you put, we, we put ourselves at much more risk legally. And after a long experience in the city of Ventura with the ordinances, the mobile home rent control ordinances and the clever ways that the park owners come after it, I strongly think that's the prudent thing for us to do. Let's examine this thing after a short period of time. If we're getting a lot of applications coming in, if we're getting some applications coming in that are causing us problems in that 20 to 50, we can look at that again. But we still have an appellate court hearing that's going forward on the, on the Sonoma case, and that may help settle this, settle some of this. My recommendation would be to move forward like this is written at this point in time because of the, the interest of prudence. And we have two responsibilities here. We have a responsibility to come up with a good ordinance that solves many of the very weak things that are in the state law that are causing all these loopholes for, you know, and we, and it can't do all those things. For example, your question, how long, how long does it have to be offered at that particular price? We can't do that here. That's only, the, the state legislature really has dropped the ball on this. We got the legislation to fix this through the state legislature. It was vetoed by the governor last year. We have to get better legislation to fix this. To the extent that we can fix it, we have done that here. And so we have a responsibility to do as much as we can there, but we also have a responsibility to not put ourselves in a situation where we're caught up in litigation unnecessarily at this point in time. And if we, if we don't, if we don't take, if we don't consider both of those things, we actually can shoot ourselves on the foot and cause more problems for our, our mobile home park residents. So, been a strong advocate of trying to take care of the mobile home park residents, and I think on this one, prudence is the best thing for us to do.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in to speak to this. And I think that some of the issues have already been addressed by our county council and Supervisor Bennett as to why we are, are being very conservative in bringing this forward, following the model of Sonoma, so that it is defensible and we stand in better position legally. And also the comment that after, after further action at whatever level of review, if there's an opportunity that it should come back for amendment, that's always open to this board. And the comment made to, you know, as to having the cities do this, I think the board often has taken positions where we have raised the bar through our actions that then incentivize the cities to take a look and do the same. So I, I would advocate that you go and advocate, those of you who are in cities or, or part of your membership that's in cities, to do the same. This, this 20 to 50% issue, interesting, in last week or two weeks ago, there was a discussion at this board, and it was for an application that was in the queue prior to us bringing this forward. So the board, legally, we have, we're limited in what we could do with that proposed, with that application. But in that, there were public members who actually came and spoke in support of the conversion. And I think that any good property owner who feels that there is a desire by the residents to make a conversion, he would work, he or she would work with the residents, and, and there wouldn't be a question of whether it's 20 or 50%. There would be solid support, and that's, that is still open to property owners. We've been, you know, there's been some concern about taking these actions that then negate the property owner's rights, and there's no question that the, I believe, the law and the practice says otherwise, that there still is a right of a property owner to, to work with the community and see what is best for all parties. So I think this board headed down this path with a interest in, in protecting what we believe really is, both our low, our, our lower income and our senior income housing stock in this county that is very precious and unfortunately very little, and to do what we can to, to assist with giving some protections for that. Also, you know, certainly understanding, again, property rights and due process, but the priority must be what we're doing here today with this effort. So I, I think it's, it's, it's a good proposal that's come to us. I appreciate the planning commission having the discussion. They are the public members of, from our respective districts who really take a look at this from a independent public eye, and that they brought this forward unanimously with support speaks volumes also. Appreciate you being here to do the same.
I do appreciate the fact that we will be able to have something a little bit stronger than what we have in place right now. And the intent of this ordinance is that 50% or more of the residents have to agree that they want this to occur for us to approve it. That one section, B, still says that it would be up to the county to decide that the plan that they would be presenting will do that, will have a majority of the residents in support. I, I just offhand can't imagine where you would have 20% of the people supporting it, 20% of the residents supporting it and it going through, because they need to show on, in addition to that 20%, they need to show as, as the, as we as decision-makers find that they do have a plan that will provide a majority. We, as I understand it, have that discretion, is that right? To make that decision that it does meet, it does meet our, our criteria, that it will grant more than 50% of the residents' ownership?
The, the ordinance requires that a minimum is showing that they have a plan to get to majority sales in the park.
And we do have a really unfortunate problem in Thousand Oaks. I think about twenty-seven mobile homes, and if you had, you know, 20% of that, if five of the residents or six of the different residents wanted to convert, that means the whole thing can convert. But that isn't the case here because it would still come to the board to make that decision that there is a plan in place for 50%, a majority or more, that would then go ahead and allow for purchasing. And I, I think that's, I think being able to purchase is the best thing that you can do if you can do it, and I'm glad that there are loans in place to allow that to happen because they are a substantial part of our low-income, affordable housing in our county, and we have to make sure that it's protected. And I appreciate Supervisor Bennett for bringing this forward because it is needed. And I know out in Thousand Oaks now, we're actually doing a citizens petition, trying to strengthen the protections there because we don't want to see people out, out of these places. We need them.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or anything else? Any motions?
I'll make one other comment, then I'll go ahead and make the motion unless you. And that was just a question for county council. If we're in that 20 to 50% range, the burden of proof is on the park owner to prove that 50% of the people would actually purchase. During that hearing, when that park owner was here, is it correct that the park residents would also be able to attend that hearing and offer evidence to prove that 50% of the people don't want to go forward?
Yes, certain.
Right? So the park residents would still, at that hearing, be able to come? It just, it's basically, you say the 20 to 50% determines there's going to be a hearing, which I think you're going to find the courts are going to be very, they're, they're attracted to that because you're giving the property owner this opportunity to have the hearing. But the park residents would still be able to come and present the evidence that there aren't 50% of the people. And I think you certainly have a, an independent board that would try to make a fair judicial, you know, judgment of that based on all the evidence presented at the hearing, both by the park owner as well as the park resident. So with that, I'd move the recommended action.
We have a motion in a second. Okay. And I think that, that ends our meeting. That was our last item. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.